All right, I'm gonna call the, uh, the meeting to order. Due to the governor's statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting by video conference. Those same conditions require barring access to the, uh, public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public's invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform, or by phone as indicated in the meeting agenda, to comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements, virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded. And if I could ask, uh, village clerk Schmidtky to, uh, take attendance and make sure that everyone can be heard.
Trustee Barowski, can you hear me?
Radio check, Roger.
Thank you. Trustee Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Michelle, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
I, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Tanucci, can you hear me?
I can hear you and everybody else so far.
Thank you.
All right, everyone can be heard, which is great. Um, if I could ask everyone to say a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. All right, welcome everyone. Last meeting of the year. We have on the agenda, second is the homeless association, uh, visitors. Um, is there anybody from prominent, prominatory point here, Maury Glicksman? I take that as a no. How about, uh, Bob Morrison from, uh, Deerwood Estates? Bob, are you here? Uh, what about from Woodbine, um, Craig Smith? All right, they're not here. I hope they're getting the notices, Greg. No one's here. So hopefully they got notices. Um, hey, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment tonight?
Uh, yes, I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Kapacki.
This is to Greg Jackson. I have found the orange flags and they are inexpensive and I replaced the one set. And, uh, well, actually the merchants did because I used the merchant's credit card. You know, didn't tell you about that, Ryan. But, uh, if any other ones go awry, we're gonna take care of them.
Uh, Greg, I can't hear you, so.
I'm just, thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. It was my pleasure, trust me. The, uh, we're also, uh, we're gonna replace some fuses in some of the light poles. They're, uh, they're gone in about five poles. I bought some of them yesterday. And we've already done this in the past. It's just a thing.
All right, John, thanks for that. Any other, uh, public comment?
Um, I did one quick one for, uh, for the board and for the village. Uh, if you've gone by the Buffalo Creek, uh, park by the bridge, we've got the first part of the council ring completed. Uh, we'll finish, uh, the project for the first phase in early spring. Unfortunately, concrete wasn't available because of the weather conditions, but we were able to get some stuff started. And, uh, if anyone drives by, you'll see it really looks, it turned out nicely for the first phase and, uh, we'll, we'll complete that, uh, soon as concrete's available in the spring and then, uh, work on phase two.
Yeah, I drove, I drove past it. It looks really, really nice.
So, and we will use the rest of those abutments. If there's any questions as we move on, that'll be the, the rest of the phase one with the, uh, by the bridge for the display area and, and the steps coming down.
Super.
I can't wait.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep, great news. Any other public comment?
Oh.
Public Works Department, John Kapacki.
Well, one more, one more thing. Uh, you probably all know this already, but we came in second place across the country as Christmas Town, which was.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and that was, uh, quite a, it was so fun to see who we were up against and we're the only one in the state of Illinois that, that placed and, uh, but, uh, some really, uh, high-ticket places were in it, in it, and we actually beat them out. I think it was for quaintness is what we got out of that one, but.
That's terrific. It looks so pretty. It looks so pretty downtown.
It really made me feel bad. A couple of light poles are on, and the light, the wrap, but they're not lit. We'll get them.
Well, congratulations. That's great news.
Yeah, definitely.
Terrific.
All right, if there's no more public comment, I don't think there's anyone from the Lake County Sheriff or the Fire Protection District.
Just, just for information purposes for the, for you, Mr. President of the Board, I am meeting with, uh, I've had communication with the new fire chief for Long Grove Protection District and we're meeting, uh, to, to discuss, uh, joint concerns and how we can work together. Uh, we've got a meeting the second weekend in January at Village Hall.
All right, thanks for that update. Okay, then if there's, um, nobody, uh, from the public safety organizations, let's move to number five on the agenda, which is uh, consideration and discussion of funding, um, to support the Midwest Sustainability Group. And Rita, should I let you introduce this topic?
Sure. Do you, is Barb on yet?
Barb is here. I see her.
Oh, great, great. Um, I, I, I think everyone is familiar with, um, Barb and Midwest Sustainability. Barb wears a number of hats and she's just one of the people on the 53 corridor group with me. And, uh, Mike, Mike Charletto and, um, Tony Dean, of course, are also on the same committee. Um, this is, these are the folks that have been, uh, working for us, fighting for us to get the corridor, get as much of the corridor as possible to remain the way it is and or, and or improve, but not for motorized traffic necessarily. And, uh, Barb, go ahead. You can, you can, you can fill in with the rest.
All right. Um, hopefully everybody can hear me all right. Um, I apologize. You got this rather late. I sent it is, I had some outlook issues and Rita said she didn't get it, so I resent it later. Um, a couple of updates since I spoke with you, I guess it was in October. Uh, we did meet with the village of Hawthorne Woods and, uh, they're coming from a position where they'd like 100% protection in the corridor. So that's, I mean, that's good news. They're not looking for development. Um, we did also speak with the village of Grayslake, not the mayor yet or the village administrator, but some of the trustees and they are, um, also looking for protection, generally speaking. So I think that's, that's all good news. I think there's a lot of agreement about, uh, the fact that people want a trail um, along the corridor. Um, we have looked at some of the parcels that President Jacob identified, uh, that Long Grove might or might not, uh, look at, um, for development and, um, we spoke with that on our team call this week, um, and Open Lands had some concerns about, um, there is, there are some protected areas. Actually, can you show the, I sent you guys a link for a map. Is that, could you show that?
Yeah, let me try. I may have one computer screen.
I don't think I can share, right? Oh, I can.
I can let you share if you, if you want.
Yeah, if you can let me share, it's probably easier if I do it.
Okay, I just, uh,
Barbara, could you clarify for, for me? This is Bobby. Um, I clarify for me. What, what development you're, you're talking about for Long Grove? In, in the quarter?
Uh, in conversations I've had, and I don't know that you all have decided as a body what, what you're looking at, um, and I'll, I'll zoom in on this. Uh, let me zoom in first and then I'll show you what we're looking at here.
Well, and then I, I guess I wondered, do other board members know this or is this a first sharing of, of, of our president's opinion?
No, I think this is something that, um, you know, was in a HOA president's meeting. In our comprehensive plan, this big parcel of land here, um, we have, we, we have this in our, uh, comprehensive plan to be developed, right? And so it's, we're talking about this big chunk here, Bobby. Uh, not, uh, not necessarily the whole, um, the corridor, but all, they, they bought all of this land, the state did for on and off ramps, et cetera. So we would literally, if we're not able to develop it, you can pretty much take the sub area out of our comprehensive plan because it's the whole sub area, most of the sub area.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's this parcel right here in particular, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, if I can add, I'm, I sent you all a link to this map. It's interactive and you can add layers in to see things. Uh, but if I add in the Lake County GI into this and streams and wetlands, I just kind of wanted to show you this. I'm gonna zoom into it. A little bit. So all, the only thought Open Lands has where there's some sensitive areas in here that the county or the BRAC have identified as sensitive, it's pretty far back off these parcels. I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I just wanted to.
But I mean, if there's a, if there's a problem, I mean, Bobby, if there's a problem with that thought.
No, it's strictly not knowing what, what, what was, was being referred to.
Okay, got it. Yeah, sorry about that.
And once upon a time, we, I think during the comprehensive plan meetings, it was discussed that this would not be a bad spot for railway transportation of people. That, that a possible link because of the tracks that run just east of what you're looking at.
And I think transit oriented development is certainly something, but we're getting, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. I just wanted you to know.
I, I, I apologize. I just have to pick up on it when I hear it.
Oh, I totally understand that. No, I mean, it's premature probably to be discussing exactly what you want there because I don't know if you all know what you want there, but I just wanted you to know. I wanted to flag those concerns people had about the back end of those parcels for you, give you a little heads up about that. I'm gonna turn off the streams and wetlands now. Um, in the Lake County GI, and I'm gonna back out here. The, this yellow that you see on this map is the I dot owned parcels right now. And I'm gonna back out so you really can get a good look at what I'm talking about here. So the orange, the orange things on the map here, one, the one over here is the Liberty Prairie Reserve. This one here is the Volo National Wildlife, or sorry, State Wildlife Area. And this kind of ring we have up here is the Hackmatac National Wildlife Refuge. I, I don't think I've shown this to you before, have I?
Um, you know, so I went to, I have this.
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I went to, I went to the session where you, um, one of your sessions where you laid this out and I saved the link. So I have access to this map.
And Long Grove obviously is right down here. I think you know where you are.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to have a good idea of what's really going on here. So if you can see this, this goes up and here's the 120 bypass here, right? And that, you can see they have some missing parcels they don't own. So to the east, this would connect with 94. And to the west, they say it would only go to Volo, but look what they've owned all the way up here. You can see, you don't have to be an engineer or know any trade secrets to understand. This is to connect McHenry County with ultimately 355. And you can see that if they build this 120 bypass here, it puts the target on Long Grove because this is always.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, this is always gonna be the missing piece down here, right? So, uh, that's why I wanted to flag for you. We had planned to come and ask for a funding proposal early next quarter. This got bummed up because I, we did some research, we got tipped off and we did some research and some FOIA requests. I think I mentioned this to you last time I spoke with you. Um, and the Lake County Municipal League is planning to revive the talks on the 120 bypass. And they got that approved in the 19, early 2000s, 2006, I think it was. And they were, at the time, all the villages voted, and by all the villages, I mean, Gurumah, Keegan, Wakanda, not just the corridor towns you'd expect. They all voted unanimously to go to, through the county and have the county match it and apply for a federal tiger grant to do phase one engineering on the 120 bypass. They didn't get that grant at the time and it kind of died at the, at the time. I think now because we're talking about protecting the, the 53 corridor, they think it's an opportune moment to revive the talks about the 120 bypass. In other words, if we can't have the 53 corridor, at least give us the 120 bypass. Uh, so we, uh, last time they did these votes, it was this time of year and I, I, you guys are all politically astute, uh, so you understand that the, the best time for them to put these on their agenda and vote for them are over the holidays when people aren't looking. So we just wanted to be prepared. Um, Senator Bush did have talks with Grayslake and she did point out that, um, they're not gonna get their grade separation at 120 and 83 they want if they, if they don't take this off the table. They said they would. And we haven't heard anything since then. We do have a source that we have now developed inside the board of the Lake County Municipal League, so we will be able to get detailed information um, about what they plan to do to proceed with this. So I just wanted to fly, I wanted to show you that big picture. You all have a link to it. It's kind of fun. You can add in flood hazards. Here, I'll zoom in so you can really see the flood hazards and I'll bring you down to, um, Long Grove so you can see your own area. So you can add in the streams and the wetlands. And you can add in, um, Lake County areas they want protected. And the BRAC sensitive areas. I mean, you really can get, you can add in layers and play around with this and really see how it overlays with your own area. You can add in flood, flood plains, and this is another fun one, public features. I don't know if you saw the little school and the tree pop up, but parks and schools will show up here too. So, um, you know, enjoy that. That's an Open Lands product, by the way. I don't want to take credit for it. Um, our team, the Green Corridor Coalition are, we're using it. Uh, but Open Lands developed this, um, this great map for us.
Hey Barbara, when was the last time this was updated?
You know, I think it, it, it's been a couple of years, like two years, because I think there's a state-owned parcel that's not on here and I was gonna flag that for them.
Okay, I was curious. Yeah, because I have the link from whenever that meeting was, right? That, that we participated in with, uh, Senator McCocky and Senator Bush and everything else like that, Tony Dean. Way long time ago, right? Yep.
So, um, and then I, I will also pull up, I think I have to stop sharing and reshare these for you. Um, I had spoken with you about the, this FOIA request, so I wanted to show you. I think I can share these this way. Um, this was an internal discussion. I mean, this was, I got this through a FOIA request, so it's not anything, you know, that's not publicly accessible here. And if you can all see that, reading from the bottom up, this was me asking in August if, if, this is when I got tipped off that something was going on with it. Um, and then Shane Schneider writes to internally, these are, um, county administrators and says, it looks like some of the municipalities might be trying to pass an updated resolution. So they are trying to pass an updated resolution. And then one of the, um, assistant county administrator says, um, he's asking, um, if they all need to revote basically in order to get this going. And, and Shane, head of Lake County DOT says, not sure. It seems their objective is to get movement on phase one engineering study. If they had unanimous support, that would probably get IDOT's attention more than just one or two of them passing it. So, um, I just wanna, I wanted you to actually see some of the FOIA documents. Um, I have a couple others. I don't know that you need to see all of them. They're, they're from the different mayors that were asking for it to move forward and so on. Um, so I know you're pressed for time and you want to enjoy your, um, your break for the end of the year. So, um, I, I, we submitted to you our proposal. It, it starts with the way we use the last funding tranche. Um, and Rita asked us to put in specific goals uh, for this and we did. And, and kind of a big picture, um, second half of last year, it was the, the whole team. It was our goal to focus on showcasing what's at stake, right? So we, I don't know if you saw the photos from the photo contest that, um, that we held, beautiful. Have you all seen them? Um, beautiful photos and we're gonna have an art exhibit at the Adler Gallery in January about that. We did all the corridor tours. I'm still doing corridor tours. We, after we finished the group tours, I've been doing private tours for anybody that, um, is interested in going. Um, but that was last, the end of last year. Beginning of this year, the way we see that we can use our skills the best really is two things. One, continuing to develop the grassroots team having, uh, we're gonna switch to house parties now, which may end up being on Zoom depending on what COVID does. Um, where we develop team leaders and grassroots teams because the end of 2022, the second half, is going to probably go to public forums. It depends on what the task force does and how easy this is gonna be or difficult. But assuming that there might be a little resistance to protecting it, we may need to get the members of the public to put pressures, pressure on, particularly, uh, we're concerned about Mundaline, um, to go along with, with protection. So, uh, we're, we need to build a grassroots team in order to do that and, and be able to really have a movement building. So that's one thing. The second thing, and this is the big part of what our work's gonna be in the first half of 2022, is individual meetings. Uh, we have developed, and I have to explain, in, in organizing what we call a target, it sounds like it's like we're going after them or something. A target is just someone who can give you what you want. Right? So the governor is a target. All the county board members are targets. Um, all the, all of you and the mayors and the trustees of all the corridor towns are targets. And all the general assembly members in, um, in the, in Lake County are targets because this is gonna go to a vote of the, of the county unless they decide to just make it a state park, which is under discussion, I guess. So, um, all those targets, we all need, we need to meet with them. We need to educate them. We need to hear what their concerns are or their, their views and that's gonna be the bulk of our work in the first half of the year. Setting ourselves up then for public, um, hearings and town halls and things in the second half. And we hope you all would consider having another town hall like we did, um, during, um, the Route 53 battle. Um, I, one more, last thing I guess I should say, um, I was asked for specific, specific goals. We did put specific goals in here, but I have to put a caveat in there. Our work, the, the nature of the work we do is really hard to give specific goals. This is our plan and those are specific goals, but let's say the Lake County Municipal League decides to move forward this month. All of a sudden, everything gets moved into that, all our resources. Um, so we, we make a plan and we have specific goals and then we have to react to things that, that we can't control and that's just the nature of our work. So.
So, so Rita, what was, um, what, what is your ask of the board tonight? Um, having just, this proposal just came through tonight.
Um, a- actually, I, I'd like, I, I don't really know for certain that every, that the board is behind this. Does anybody have questions? Are, are we all on the same page?
I, I have two questions. One is, if, if we could back up to the actual study of the, of the route and, and saving and protecting it, are there any properties that I dot owns that are on alternative routes?
I'm not sure I understand.
What does that mean, Bobby?
There, there were, there were three, I think, alternative routes.
Oh, right.
Coming through, through Long Grove. And do they own any of those, uh, any parcels within those, um, alternatives?
That's a good question. I'll have to ask Open Lands if there are any other parcels. I think they were just laying out the parcels in the, the last, um, alternative that was being, uh, considered, but I can find that out for you.
Okay. And, and then my, my second question would be, um, and, and maybe I missed it, but who else is funding you?
Um, well, we have, um, we're working with Open Lands and doing joint grant applications and we're also gonna be applying, finally, um, the grant application period is opening for the village of Grayslake too. And we're gonna be applying for a grant from the village of Grayslake as well.
So is Hawthorne Woods?
I'm sorry.
Is Hawthorne Woods, is Mundaline, is Grayslake?
Yet with, uh, the Grayslake, yes. We're, we're applying. We can't say until we get it. Um, their grant funding, they only do it on the first quarter of the year. So we're gonna be doing that at the first of the year when they release their grant applications. Um, we haven't asked Mundaline for it yet. We haven't met with them yet. So we have to meet with them first, which was one of the first things we're gonna be doing.
How about Hawthorne Woods?
Hawthorne Woods doesn't have any grants, um, but we did discuss.
We don't need a grant. We just need the money. I, I just worry about the money. I don't care where it comes from within the village.
For that with the mayor when we met with him. Um, and we'll see if, I, I'm not optimistic about it, to be honest with you, because they let Mike Truppa go and he was the communications guy, so we've had to be privately funding him. So I'm not, I'm not optimistic about that one.
That's troubling.
To, to that point, um, Barb and I have had conversations about, and, and, and I don't know if you remember, but just before the, everything got shut down because of the pandemic, we were going to host a luncheon for the mayors of the towns along, to invite the mayors along the corridor and in the towns contiguous to the corridor. But to just share information, uh, and communicate our, our thoughts, our, our wishes, hopes, all that kind of thing, and to feel them out on where they are. Uh, because we're, you know, I, I, I think I know where you're going with that, Bobby. The same thing, you know, struck me was, you know, we set monies aside for, for this project and initially we talked about lobbyists. And the, these people are lobbying for us. We, and we have monies, but where are the other people?
Well, it's a sense of fairness.
Right.
If we're, if we're all doing the same thing for the same reason, but, but we're paying the freight, um, that doesn't seem quite culture.
Right. And maybe, um, you know, maybe that's something we can discuss maybe another, another evening and, and in more detail regarding getting these people together and saying, you know, hey folks, what, where are you on this? And nicely, can you put your money where your mouth is kind of thing?
Well, Barbara just said Hawthorne Woods wants protection. Well, I want a lot of things.
Right.
But I gotta be willing to pay for them too.
Right, right. I understand.
Let me ask this question because I think, um, we're closing out the year. Um, our next meeting's gonna be the second week in January. Um, it sounded like this was pretty urgent. It sort of snuck up on us. Um, is there some amount that would, um, that we could, you know, we could offer that would help, uh, keep this afloat while those other discussions happen? So it's not the, I think it's 10,000, $10,010, right? What if it was half of that? Would, is that something the board would be willing to do? And Barbara, would that help you? Uh, keep this moving while you.
Urgency in case they move forward at this time, which is when they voted on it last time was in December. So we just, we felt a sense of urgency to be prepared in case they do.
I mean, would the board be okay with that? I.
Well, I, I, I think Barbara does such a good job that I would fund her completely. Um, I, I, I don't think we need to, to be stingy at this point. You're, they're, they're, you're on the brink possibly of, of major change and, and that costs money.
I would support the full amount and I, and I definitely take Bobby and Rita's point of, you know, can we in parallel then also try to use our own opportunities to communicate with the other villages to get them on board?
Ken?
Is that too much to ask?
No, no, it's not. Actually, I had scheduled the meeting and I canceled it because of COVID. It was just not the right thing to do. So I had it scheduled, so.
Yeah, and I agree with what Ann said.
All right, thank you. Chris?
I'm not sure I understand what the full amount is. I thought we had like, uh, we were talking about 30,000 and I think somebody just mentioned 10,000. Am I missing?
Yeah, there's a proposal that was, um, a mistake in the village manager's memo, uh, report. So it's, it's, uh, there's a proposal that came out today, uh, for 10,000, $10.
There's 30, there's 30,000 remaining in the budget on that line.
Yeah, our, our limit on grants is 10,000 per recipient. That's at least when we put the grant program in, that's how we structured it.
Well, this, this isn't the grant money.
It, no.
The money we set aside, we, we set that 50,000.
This was 53 money.
Right, right.
That's right. We, that's right. Separate ID. I'm sorry. You're right.
It's its own bucket.
Yeah, I'm fine with 10 grand, Bill.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see, who am I missing? Jenny?
I'm good. I agree. 10,000. I think it's really critical that we stay on top of this and then I appreciate Barbara's hard work.
Okay, so then Bobby, you are a yes, right? Uh, Rita was a yes. Does somebody want to make a motion then?
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Um, Michelle, that would be a roll call.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Michelle.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
And just to be clear, right, this is to approve, uh, $10,000, what, per the proposal um, from Barbara, from, uh, what is it, Midwest Sustainability Group?
Yeah.
Which was in budget anyway.
Yeah. Okay, motion carried. Okay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you all. There is some news breaking. It's quarantine till tomorrow. I'll send it to Rita and you can send it out to the team tomorrow. It is, it's a political of nature, but it does, it will impact our work. I haven't, I'm still, I just found out about it. I'm still wrapping my head around it. I hate to be a teaser. But I didn't, I did promise not to leak it before it breaks in the news tomorrow. So I'll send it to Rita and Rita, if you would, you can send it to, to everybody on the board.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a good holiday.
You too. Thank you for being here. Okay. So I think the way this agenda worked out, I think the next item on the agenda is the village engineers report. Jeff, you're up.
All right. Thank you. So you've got this week's engineers report in the board packet dated December 10th. I'll just go through the first page. It's got most of the, the updates on it. A lot of these are what was discussed at the board meeting three weeks ago in written form with a couple other notes here. First one, Stempel Parking Lot Construction's kind of wrapped up for the year with the exception of still getting some pavement markings on the west side of cigars and more. And then this spring, they'll be completing the, the punch list for that project. A couple of the punch list items are, you know, the final striping, the, there's a couple of signs that still need to get put up. And then still working through the permit for the two-way access to Old McHenry Road with the county. Robert Parker Coffin Path, that project is substantially complete. There's a couple punch list items on that one as well. Still working with I dot to get things closed out with the pedestrian signals. They've got quite the process for that, but those buttons are active. And I know that the construction staff from our office walked across and enjoyed the experience on that. So one of the other things that if you drove, drove by and you may notice, there's a couple steep slopes that come off of the path at the Storm sewer culvert. So we're working with Chicagoland to get those resolved.
Jeff, Jeff, or maybe anybody, I, I know, we know, it had to be on that side. I walked it Saturday. Lovely day for a walk there. It's still, it's really, it's, it's going to be interesting because if you're coming to Sunset, you know, you basically, you're dumped on that one side. And then you got to cross over again to get, and most of everything you want to go to is on the left, but you got to go to the right to find a sidewalk. It's hard. Is there anything we can do to either encourage Sunset? Can Sunset Grove change anything to have a path actually coming from there? Or is that not workable?
You're talking on the, on the south side of what would be the Robert Parker Coffin Extension? South side of Robert Parker Coffin, East of 83?
I'm talking, I'm talking on the corner closest to CBS.
Yeah. And, and actually Bobby brought this up, right?
Oh, yeah.
I remember she did. And I know, I know, I know, and I walked it personally. And I know she brought it up and I'm repeating it. I know it's not part of the scope.
Horrible situation. It's an accident waiting to happen.
I just, is there anything we can do to, now, I mean, this is the way it had to be from I dot. Is there anything we can do to work with the owners of Sunset Grove on pathways inside of Sunset Grove? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I remember the conversation and we looked at a couple options. I don't, Greg and I haven't had a chance to specifically discuss it. Just connections between, you know, and, and, and I know this isn't, wasn't exactly what you brought up. But, you know, connections from the parking lot to the path that runs alongside of 83. To, back to your, your comment, you know, the, on the side closest to CVS on the north side of the RPC extension, if you will. They've got quite a bit of grade change there. They've got a retaining wall guard rail. It's a tight space there. And, you know, so that was one of the challenges. And then, you know, just taking a step back, you know, another challenge trying to cross 83 on the south side. That was going to add ease, you know, another six figures to the project. So, you know, those were some of the considerations that were out there. So it's, you know, unfortunately there wasn't the perfect solution available on that. So can we have some discussions? I can work with, with Greg to see if they'd be open to that. The owners over there to see what we could do.
That's all I'm asking. I know we were kind of stuck. Go ahead. Sorry.
It's, it's, is there any consideration to putting more hard surface on the other side of the traffic light? Because I make that turn there twice a day, five days a week. And, and I make the left-hand turn twice a day, five days a week. It is an accident waiting to happen. That, I, I don't, I've not stood on that pad that's there now. But it will hold three, maybe four people. And God forbid, a child is not groped very strongly with a parent. They're going to be in the street.
And Bobby, you're, you're talking the northwest corner?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's something that can easily be looked at and some hard surface added there.
Sounds to me like we need a bridge.
Oh, jeez.
Let's, let's start with a little more pad.
Hey Jeff, though the one thing I did hear from Ann, I don't want to lose sight of it was if there was a way to have like a cut through right directly into the sunset, even if it was a little bit north, if you will, a cut through into the sunset parking lot or CVS somehow, that's what, that's what the ask is.
Yeah. And, and that was what we looked at and we put in a memo and Greg and I just haven't had a chance to discuss it before presenting it to the board.
You could have a slide.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of grade change there.
You definitely could have a slide. Yes.
All right, Jeff, keep going. Go ahead.
Okay. The Lake Michigan Water Connection to the downtown, there was some discussion, quite a bit of discussion on that at the last board meeting. The, we had some additional discussions about that November 30th. It was between manager Jackson, president Jacob, trustee Tanucci. So we're still gathering some information on that as far as scope and funding. And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're, our goal is to present that to, at the January 11th board meeting.
Myself and trustee Kritzmeyer are looking at some things from a financial standpoint as well. And we hope to maybe have some documents ready to present or a report ready to present to the board on that first meeting.
Okay. The next item, number four on the engineers report is the over height detection system for the bridge. Just summarize some of the conversation we had at the board meeting three weeks ago. We did get proposals for the over height detectors and system. There was actually three that we got. Wooten Electric, Hometown Electric and Utility Dynamics all provided proposals for that. I summarized those in memo form, just to kind of bring all the different pieces together. And we're in process of scheduling a, a joint staff review meeting with trustee O'Reilly to review that memo costs and then queue that up to present to the board in the new year. Similar to that discussion, number five, the checker road traffic calming. I did, we are summarizing different options for that to circle back on the discussion that we had three weeks ago. And then that'll be presented to the board in the new year as well. Jumping down to number eight, the, the covered bridge. You may remember last year about this time, our office submitted a project of the year application to the American Public Works Association for the Robert Parker Road project. That was the, the reconstruction of the road. And I did say at that point in time, hey, next year, I'm going to submit the bridge abutment project for project of the year for the historical preservation category. So that application went in on, on Friday. I noticed late this afternoon that the actual written narrative of that application did not find its way into the board packet. So that was one of the items that I distributed to Greg, blind copy to the board via email at about 6:30. So take a look at that. I think it's a pretty strong application, if I do say so myself. We should hear late December or early January what the committee decides on that. So.
And Jeff, if it's decided favorably, what's in it for us?
There will be a plaque for the village and there will also be two complimentary tickets to a dinner at Maria Maggiano's to their award ceremony.
Okay. And is there any cost involved in submitting this application? I mean, if we're, you know, I'd buy you a dinner if you'd like, if it's easier.
No, similar to, to last year, that was just something that we provided on behalf of the village at our cost. No costs, application fees or anything like that to the, to the committee.
Thank you, Gabe Old Hamilton. Appreciate that.
The last thing?
So my, my only request is that the document, Jeff, that you sent in just before the meeting, get uploaded to the Google Drive. So we have everything in one place.
Okay. Greg and Denise, can you make that happen?
No, it'll happen.
Thank you.
Can we put it on the website too? When we get the prize that is?
We certainly should.
Absolutely.
The last item that I wanted to highlight at this point, the, this is number 18. This is the light in front of the olive tap. When I wrote this report, the contractor didn't know where the light pole was, but soon after they found the light pole and they put it up on Saturday. So there's a, a new light pole in front of the olive tap. I see Ryan and John here. Hopefully you guys noticed that and put some greenery on that. So it doesn't, so it matches the other ones.
I'll get it done.
Village, village manager Jackson, did you get the insurance funding for that?
Two lights that are out. One's in front of the arts building down on Old McHenry. That were that school of, I don't know, school of art, I think, for young kids. And then the other one is by Marion Ward Shop within reach. Both those lights have been out for about a year. So if you can find Hometown Electric or whoever has the rig to do that.
Okay. Hey, John, I knew about the one in front of within reach and Wooten Electric is scheduled to come out and fix that. We had the township come out and take a look at it. It was beyond their capabilities. So Wooten Electric is going to bring one of their boom trucks out. Right. Here in short, hopefully in short order and get that fixed. The other one you said was in front of the arts building?
Well, it's, 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 it's in front of, it's two lamp poles.
Rivaleeno?
It's three. Yes. It's, it's rivaleeno. It's, it's three light poles down from the old Quentin house.
Okay. All right. I know the, the area you're talking about. So I'll make sure that Wooten looks at that when they're on site. Thanks.
Hey, village manager Jackson, did you get, did we get the insurance money for the pole?
Yeah. Yes. And there was more to come.
Okay. All right. Just follow it.
I have a question about the insurance. Whose policy is that being claimed against ours or somebody else's?
Somebody else's.
Okay.
Also, Jeff, I don't know if you, you didn't mention, but the president and some of the businesses had concern about that light pole in front of Landmark. Do you want to? Am I, am I correct in my understanding that it's finally been ordered? That was something that came?
Oh, 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 okay. Yes. The light pole, and this is the traffic signal at the corner of Old McHenry and Robert Parker Coffin in front of Landmark. Got confirmation from the county that they finally ordered that custom pole. So they, we can have a light installed over there. Not to rehash it, but the standard pole didn't work because of the required clearances between the light and the overhead power. The, the county informed us that it's going to be a few months before we see that. So we'll just keep tabs on that. And every month or so I'll keep asking the county for a status and relay that to the board.
While we're on downtown finery, can I ask a question?
Sure.
At the Old McHenry Road entrance to Stempel, just south of RPC, there is a village sign that says Stempel Parking Lot. And it's on what looks to be like plumbing pipe. It's a big sign, maybe seven, seven feet high. But it's leaning at a 45 degree angle. And I, I think it happened during construction. Is there any way we can write that sign holder and therefore write the sign so it doesn't look so tacky?
Jeff, Jeff and I've already had discussion about corrective action on that.
Cool.
I'll do a follow-up with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
There's, there's also, there's also a sign down where the, where the walk was done. There just needs a pole for the sign marker for the road of the subdivision. The, down towards in between Sunset and Parking Lot. It's like the, the third subdivision down on the right. That it's just laying in, in the ground. Probably know about it.
Yeah, I think that's bobble link. Yeah, I noticed that, that sign. Yeah, the contractor needs to get that one reinstalled.
You know, one of the things I, I thought would be nice to replace is the Stempel sign that's, it's in longrope gray from, I think, the nineties.
Yes.
It's pretty faded.
And, and you know, if that was a little bit like more defined, and I mean, maybe not use gray, but steel blue with white or something. It would, I've seen, I've been behind drivers that have big vehicles that have made the wrong turn and they realize, what do I do now? And they'll stop. They'll back up a little bit and then they'll see the sign. And then I go back into drive and then you see them head for it. So wide now and everything, it'll be even more obvious. But I think if that sign was a little more easy to read, the, you know, it, it might.
One by the park, John?
No.
Is this the one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were talking about the one over by the chatterbox entrance.
The one by the park, we're going to, when we finish the park next year, we're going to make a nice wooden sign that will represent the parking lot, the park, as well as the businesses behind there.
Well, maybe should the signs match?
So we coordinate that. We can coordinate that.
You know, visually, when people come into town, if they notice things like that, they will be able to notice that all of, all of the village signs look like this. You, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And we'll have the same look that you guys have at the village coming into the entrance. It'll have that same look and feel that we're going to present to, to you guys for approval.
It's a lot easier to read when we, I agree. Those signs used to be what all the signs in Long Grove looked like.
Yes.
They just seem to have survived the being called out.
Yeah. And thank you for putting that power there.
Change that ugly color that we have, that goldish yuck color. Like it's like a mustard yellow. And go back to the, the blue and white or the gray and white that was really classy.
So, so. Go ahead.
No, I was just, go ahead.
It, 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 what I hear happening here is maybe, maybe we need to hire an artist or, or someone who understands graphic design to come up with maybe a new logo and, and colors that we can make consistent throughout the downtown. So people know what to look for.
Yep. That's what I was going to say, Rita. I mean, I would use different words. They'd be more marketing words, visual, like branding and visual system. But that would be the thing.
Sounds expensive.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be. And, and there, there's a lot of sign clutter in the downtown with those tent signs that are on.
You think?
You know, so, and once we get snow and the snowplows come, the tent signs are going to be destroyed or invisible. So, you know, we're growing up here and in getting to be adults, maybe it's time that we, we talk about uniformity for those kinds of things for visitors.
Well, we used to have uniformity.
Right, right.
And, and, and you knew, you knew a color. There was a long grove color and it was kind of a grayish blue.
Yeah.
And, and it was on every sign everywhere. And I don't know why we got away from that.
I, I agree. I agree.
All right. So to bring this back, so this is something that we need to, Greg, can you own this on the things to do list? You're muted. Greg?
Yep.
Can you own it? Then we can come back to it.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we get the people at Vivalino to give us some designs?
And who?
The art studio.
Oh, the art studio. Okay.
We have an art studio. Why not?
Yep.
That's not what they do.
Okay.
Let's put this, let's table it, but it's great point and we gotta, we gotta follow up on it.
Okay.
All right. So any questions for Jeff?
I, I have, I have a question for Jeff. I don't know where I read it. I thought it was in this report that it, that, uh, something on Creekside was, was here, was on the list and, but I can't find it now.
Uh, that's the, uh, let's see.
The sewer, right? The drainage problem?
Yeah, that was the drainage serves for, um,
Six, seven.
Eileen Rosen. Yeah. Eileen Rosen, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. We, uh, completed the investigation of that and, uh, there's a, a couple creek blockages to the properties west of Eileen's house and, uh, their blockages, but they're not.
An update. She, she gave up on Long Grove and she went to the county and they're, they're, I, they may have done it today. Uh, brought a drone out to figure out where, where the, uh, blockage is.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we actually did that as well. I talked to Eileen's husband and let him know that we were, we would be doing that the week of, uh, Thanksgiving and he said that they were out, out in Florida. Uh, I know the last time they had conversations with, uh, Lake County over the summer, Lake County, uh, contacted me because it's, uh, becomes an interjurisdictional thing.
Okay. Well, they're scheduled, they're, they're scheduled to do it.
Okay.
So, uh, just as an update.
Okay. No, thank you.
Any other questions?
Maybe there's a graphic, maybe there's a graphic design class at CLC that would be willing to do what the marketing, uh, classes did at Stevenson. Maybe worth phone call.
Stevenson would not. They, they don't have that. We've, in our partnership with them, that's not what they're.
She said CLC.
Um, I had one question to go back to the Stempel Parking Lot. Um, there's that one strip of grass that was removed and there's still a trough. And I know that we have some wood pylons that are marking some of it, but there's a large stretch of it that has no, nothing to warn people that there's like a big divot there. Is there any plans to, to comb that off or do any, fill that in?
Yes, there are, are plans for that. Um, we were working with, uh, the downtown organization, uh, giving them that space as the home for the earthwork that they needed to do for the, uh, council ring project. And I just, uh, coordinated with Ryan just to kind of confirm that they were done with, their contractor was done. Uh, because if they're done, that means, you know, we'll work with the village's contractor, Geske and Sons to, uh, have that filled. Because yes, that's a, uh, something that needs to be done for a variety of reasons. And it will be done.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, on that, so they've, they've moved out ten yards already. Um, which they filled in the, uh, by Julie Newman's, they filled in along, you know, the walkway or the driveway there. Um, he was going to see if he can get a couple more trucks. I'll confirm that tomorrow to find out what he was going to. When they, when they were finishing out the council ring, we started going back into cold weather. So they were closing things down. So let me see what, and where we're at with the, the two additional trucks. Okay. Thanks, Ryan. No problem.
All right. If there's no more questions, I'm going to keep us moving. Um, so the next item on the agenda is the, uh, approval of the HD LGBA events, event dates only, not the, not the actual events themselves, but the, the calendar or the actual dates themselves. Is there any discussion on that?
I would make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two special events calendar.
Second.
Okay. Move by trust, uh, trustee, um, O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Micho. Roll call please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
You're muted, Chris.
Yeah, sorry. I know I was. Um, aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Yes, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is this, is, is this vote premature based upon the discussion over the SSA issues?
I, I, I don't think so.
One, one's not predicated on the other.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right. Motion, motion carried. Uh, there are two, um, raffle uh, applications in here, um, one for the St. Viter High School waiver of the twenty-five dollar application fee plus the bond requirements. I gotta be honest with you. I'm still confused on what Greg, you wrote, because I know that was my question on the waiver of the bond. So maybe you can answer that question?
The bond, I, I checked with Vic and then the bond's nothing more than for, to protect the, uh, the organization having the event in case of theft or somebody, uh, something like that.
But you said it had to be unanimous vote by the board to waive it.
Under, uh, this is Vic, under our ordinance, uh, our ordinance largely tracks the state statute. State statute allows the municipality to, uh, incorporate a waiver requirement for the bond. Our ordinance says that they can waive it, but it has to be unanimously approved by the organization, uh, whether it's its governing board or, uh, or, or its shareholders, if that's the case. In the case of, uh, our applications, it's something that they can indicate or they can even do it after the fact. So given what our ordinance says, I would say the waiver can be made subject to, or we give the permit saying that, and the bond is waived, provided that, uh, the corporate, uh, governing board of the organization, uh, unanimously approves the waiver.
Oh, okay. Got it.
And it's just what our ordinance says. We have the ability to change that, but that's what's on the books today.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Can I ask, good. Can I ask a question?
Yep. Go ahead, Chris.
What does, um, six E actually, what does that actually say? I mean, it's like really poor penmanship in there. And I'm like, it looks to me like we're having something about a senior prom or something. I can't quite read that.
Uh, six E on the.
Yeah, on the application form.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
The first two words are unintelligible, but yeah, I, something, something for SVHS senior prom, right?
It looks like fundraiser.
Oh. Okay.
Yes, they were just, they were just trying to raise funds for their senior prom. So.
Yeah, it says fundraiser for, uh, St. Viter High School Senior Prom.
And I, I mean, I gotta say it. I mean, does anybody find it strange that the brewery is raising funds for a high school event? I mean, isn't that kind of weird?
It actually crossed my mind, yeah.
Who, who are the participants?
Well, certainly.
I just assume the brewery is their venue and they're having, they're having an event that's going to have a raffle. And so I'm good.
Yeah, there is the whole upstairs area that isn't in the bar, that kind of yoga studio. So I'm assuming I, one of the girls had their graduation, girlfriends had their graduation party there. So.
Yeah. I have no objection. I just did think it was kind of ironic that.
Does somebody want to make a?
What could possibly go wrong?
Does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Some move.
Some move.
Okay. So moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Pritzmaier. And it's, and Vic, it's subject to, uh, say that again, subject to.
Unanimous vote of the members of the licensed organization.
Right.
Right. That we will, uh, grant the license with the waiver subject to unanimous vote of the same, whatever the.
Member, members of the licensed organization.
How do we know?
They're going to have to give us some indication of it, whether it's minutes or a certification of, of it. I don't think we have to be overly formal. If they make a representation, I think we can accept that.
Okay, that's a roll call.
Uh, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
I'm going to abstain from this vote. Um, not, not for the other reasons stated, but again, I just don't even know who the charity is in this case. And, and the form again is just incomplete from the previous discussions we've had before. So I'll just abstain. One me.
Somebody's got kids.
One me.
In a vehicle.
Uh, trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
I'm going to abstain.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Um, then we have the next, uh, raffle application for the woodland uh, middle school. And it's just the way the, uh,
Yeah, I drop them off.
Twenty-five hour application. I'm going to try to, who's speaking right now? Can you mute?
Um, can I get a McDonald's Coke?
What?
Yeah.
I'd like one of those too, but can you mute please?
And fries.
Sorry.
Can you mute? Can somebody mute them?
Yeah, let me see if I can mute. Let's see if I can. All right. Just let's keep going. So it's, um, does anyone want to discuss this one for the Woodland Middle School? Uh, raffle and waiving the twenty-five dollar fee or, um, somebody want to make a motion?
I, I would make a motion to approve, uh, the Woodland, uh, raffle application along with, uh, are, are we waiving any, anything with this one?
The twenty-five dollar fee.
And waiving the twenty-five dollar fee.
Application fee. Yeah. So moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, trustee O'Connor?
Yes.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Uh, okay, moving right along. Uh, I'm going to ask for help here. This is discussion of the casualty workers compensation insurance proposal from Martha J. Gallagher. There's an alternative pro- proposal, um, in here as well. Um, Greg, you want to take us through that?
We, uh, a- as the board knows, we approved the healthcare insurance, uh, the employee healthcare insurance and dental at the last board meeting. One of the comments that came up in discussion was our inability as a staff, uh, with the amount of time between the new manager coming on board and when the proposal had to renew, that we were unable to, uh, formulate a adequate RFP to put this out and, uh, put out the healthcare insurance for competitive bid. We had a little more time with the property casualty insurance. And I think what, uh, uh, was really upsetting is we made a significant jump from Gallagher from last year to this year. And as we had discussions with them on the renewal, uh, some of their responses as to why they were increasing our premiums, especially when we don't, we have very few claims, uh, if any, uh, was pretty much, uh, along the lines of you've been low enough for past years and you need to catch up. I mean, that in essence is what they said. I had conversations with trustee Tanucci, uh, having his expertise in this field. I reached out to another broker who I thought that in a pinch, because time was of the essence, they would be able to pull together a better bid. They did. They came up with, uh, everything, uh, for the most part, and I'll defer to trustee Tanucci for his perspective as well. Um, did pretty darn well with their competitive bid up to and including a difference of about twenty-three thousand dollars in savings, which ends up making our annual premium even less than what it was last year with, uh, with Gallagher. Um, the only thing that we are missing on the insurance claim is cyber insurance. Further research, uh, between today, yesterday and today revealed that what we had for cyber insurance, uh, with our current insurance carrier was minimal. Uh, we are estimating, uh, after getting a quote for the cyber insurance that I would, uh, ask the board's permission to approve, um, and, and to ratify in January. So we don't lose any coverage. Uh, we're estimating somewhere around the range of about twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, at max. So that would, uh, still put us in a savings position of about twenty-one thousand dollars by changing insurance companies. ICRMT is the Illinois, uh, uh, County Risk Management Trust. And, uh, they've been around for a number of years. I used, uh, they were our insurance when I was a county administrator downstate. They performed exceptionally well to meet our needs at that county. Um, so we would be asking the board, uh, let me, one more thing, workers comp. Uh, we are going to continue to go through IPRF for our workers comp. There wasn't enough time for us to make the change uh, as it relates to workers comp, but the dollars will remain the same as they are with Gallagher. And, uh, I'll yield to trustee Tanucci if he has any comments.
So as far as the workers comp go, they had a ninety day cancellation clause and we're well beyond that now. So we're going to keep that same policy, but change the agent of record over to Stolaric. And we'll have an opportunity next year to call workers comp with, um, ICRMT or whoever we want and then decide uh, at this time next year, if we want to continue with IPRF for workers comp or go with, um, ICRMT. So that's workers comp. And then for the rest of it, the coverages are equal or better in almost every case. In some cases, much better. Um, one major change, which I'll explain, that may turn out to be not even applicable to us, is for earthquake coverage. Right now we have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible for earthquake coverage. With the new policy, it's a fifty thousand dollar deductible. You know, we're going to be saving even after the cyber insurance, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars a year. You know, we'll, we'll make up that extra twenty-five thousand difference in a year, give or take. Plus, you know, earthquake really isn't a thing around here. It can theoretically happen, but I don't know that we've ever had a damaging earthquake around here. So it's a minimal risk, but there are many other areas where we're getting either better or significantly better coverage for less money. Also, ICRMT really is tailored for municipal insurance. That's what they do. It's a pool. I'm filling with pools for my work in the park district over there. The park district has a, uh, park district pool along with forest preserves and conservation districts. So, uh, that was a good company. And from my research of ICRMT, they're also a good company and as I say, designed to serve municipalities. As opposed to the companies we're with right now, which are regular insurance companies. It doesn't make them bad. It's just, you know, they're municipalities are one of the things they do, not the only thing they do, or at least, you know, the major thing they do. Um, I do have a question for Jeff, and if you don't have an answer now, you can get back to us. Um, one of the coverages is for the, um, the water plant. And, um, we have building coverage, but no contents coverage. So anything that's permanently installed in the building, you know, the pumps, the filters, anything that's bolted down and permanently installed is included in building coverage. Is there anything in that water treatment plant that should be covered that's not bolted down? So the thing that immediately comes to mind is the bags of salt. Now, that's not a lot of money, I don't think. Not a big deal. But is there anything else that just miscellaneous stuff, tools, stuff that's not bolted down, but physically present that we should ensure? And what would be the total value of all that?
Yeah, I could get back to you with a, a value for that, Ken. Um, if you remember, there's a couple shelving units over there that've got miscellaneous signs, like you said, tools. Um, there was a lot of bleach on those. So, uh, some of that stuff would be insurable, not so much, not so sure about the bleach, but tools and stuff like that, for sure. So I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. As you mentioned, there's a thousand dollar deductible. So if it's less than a thousand dollars, don't bother and
Correct.
even if it's only a little over a thousand, don't bother. I just want to make sure we're not missing something potentially major.
This is, I would, I would ask. This is, I would, I would ask, I would ask the board to uh this, this is a good opportunity for us, it is a good opportunity both to save money and and consistently year after year based on comparison to what we were being charged in the past. And then I would also ask the board in their, with further consideration to allow myself to uh secure cyber uh a cyber insurance uh coverage outside of this policy for, to bring back for uh board ratification at the January eleventh meeting as well.
Any discussion amongst the board here?
I don't know anything about cyber insurance, what is it by us? I mean, like, what's our risk? I mean, so we get hacked, okay, so what?
Ransomware, that's a big one nowadays.
Of six computers, do we care?
Well, it would actually, it would actually be the server and everything we have in the server, all the data we have in there, all our files, things of those of that nature.
And what's
Everything for tracking permits, our budget, our budget accounts, it would be manpower hours more than anything else to reconstruct.
And and more importantly, it shuts us down and you may have to pay the ransom to get your stuff back. That's what the insurance covers, right, is the ransom?
I'm not sure, I'm, go ahead, go ahead Greg.
No, I'm just getting in part.
Pardon me?
In part.
I see, I got you.
Yeah, we don't have the code yet, so we don't know the specifics, but yeah.
It would fix things like firewalls and actually get us back into the system if we couldn't get back in the system, it's kind of a first party and third party like things, external and internal, so it's, and yeah, we'll get a lot more information after we get the quote because there's many different levels of that insurance too, you can pick kind of a, you know, base level or, you know, more comprehensive, so we'll know more about that very soon.
Now, we have been hacked before, if you already recall, when we went to GoDaddy with, put our servers up there, we got hacked and I discovered it twice um when I was looking for some information, right, so we have been, it has happened to us before.
Understand, Bill, I'm just trying to evaluate, you know, I I don't know anything about it, so I'm trying to figure out, well, like, what our financial risk would be versus what a cyber insurance policy would even cost, I mean, I'm just totally had no experience with it, hence the question, I'm just trying to understand it and you know, just because we also get a payment of money doesn't mean we actually fix stuff to Denise's argument that we have to go fix stuff, I mean, we're gonna have to fix it either way, it's just, how much does it cost, you know?
One, one other issue that may come up, and this is a matter of checking what the policy actually covers, but to the extent that we have any uh personal data of residents or applicants uh in our system and we are hacked and they are somehow compromised, it may protect us against any claims of liability uh from those individuals.
It would, Vic, that that was actually
That to me, in terms of the the dollar impact of our liability would be where I think the insurance may have some great value.
I was, I was, I was surprised as we're going through and and just to share with the board on this topic is that uh it is our intent to go out for competitive bid on a number of things is, and including our services, and when I began to look at completing the RFP for our IT services, I was surprised to find as Denise and I were going through things that uh uh we had no protection by our um IT service provider, our third-party service provider on anything related to uh uh cyber, cyber intrusions or along those lines, so.
Hmm, that's concerning.
Um, I know, I wanted to ask you, and also, I think we do have to have a certain amount of cyber insurance, I remember at one of the meetings for the SSA, the Heron's Landing, like the the bonds, there was something that had come up that that was one of the questions that we were asked, and right now we do have basically cyber vandalism, um it's, you know, it's a very minimal, um so we do have something, but I know that 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 was an issue too.
It came up in the due diligence as we were, uh myself and Vic and Denise, you were there and and Anne were there, when we were doing the due diligence for the SSA and the bonds, one of the questions came up as to our uh our protection from cybersecurity standpoint.
And just to put a sharper point on that, that isn't so much for the bonds itself, it's really as part of the background on the village for people who are investing in a uh in in a, in a note that the village is going to be making available, so uh it's, it's really to put our status as a reliable organization for someone who's going to be investing in us.
I think we need a whole lot more information, we could probably spend an hour or two talking about what we don't know. And and so I would suggest that 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 we we get more information and but if you need, if you need some kind of authority immediately, I'm more than willing to give you that.
Well, thank you trustee, we, yeah, if we could, if if the board could um allow for for a, for me to sign off on a, just so we don't have a lapse of time or any uh issue with the policy um approval to um sign off on a policy uh by December thirty-first is is, you know, we're hoping to have it done and 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 ready to go. Uh and if you want to put a not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollar uh cap on that, I can certainly, that would certainly be appropriate.
I would make a motion to that effect.
Okay, so uh we have a motion on the table by trustee O'Reilly, does anyone want to second it?
Second.
Um, can I be, what are, what exactly, don't we have to act on the insurance that's in front of us and then we've got a sec, a second branch on the cyber?
I would, I would suggest and check, if I'm wrong, Vic, let me know that uh there'd be a motion to approve the policy with Stolaric Insurance.
We had the, we had the resolution in front of the board, that should be a separate motion from the authorization to uh to seek out and get the cyber insurance with the cap and subject to ratification.
Does it matter which comes first?
No, it's like a chicken and an egg, I'm not sure which comes first, but we'll find out.
Okay, so so um the move, uh the motion on the table right now is to uh approve the cyber insurance, the maximum twenty-five hundred dollars, right, the so that we we have coverage, right, that that's the first motion.
Because if we don't do that, we'll have no coverage as of the first of the year.
Okay, and that was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor, that's a roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
I'm going to vote no, um just because I don't know what twenty-five hundred dollars buys us. You know, if uh if Greg was to find a policy that gives us a little bit more protection, but it costs twenty-five fifty, maybe makes more sense, so I, I mean, I'm not sure what we're authorizing here, I don't get it. I don't know what twenty-five hundred bucks buys us in terms of insurance or what the benefit of it is.
So again, once we see the specifics, uh we can determine if the answer I'm about to give is correct, but I believe if we feel we need more than twenty-five hundred, we could get the policy at twenty-five hundred or less and then decide at the first board meeting to expand it to something more and make that change at that time.
Doesn't Greg have authorization for a certain amount without permission of the board?
So He he does, and I I can't recall if it's a ten thousand or five thousand, but
I think it's ten.
It's in that range.
So, so if if it was twenty-five hundred and ninety-nine cents, he could spend the ninety-nine cents on it.
And as a Christmas present, I'll put it for ninety-nine.
Right, right, right.
I can't wait to see that on your bill next time.
And I'd be happy to review that proposal when it comes in, just to see what makes sense or doesn't make sense, that'd be fine.
I guess to Chris's point, does it need a limit in here or not?
I think so.
I I would suggest that we keep the limit, not only was that part of the motion, I think that it it gives guidance to Greg. If this, since this is going to be coming back as a ratification, if there's something that you know, there's a an extra great deal that would be a little bit more, Greg certainly has a means of doing that and seeking the board's approval after the fact. And he can also confer with, you know, confer with you through uh through email communications, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable with it.
Okay.
Hey, Michelle, keep going, please.
Uh trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, somebody want to make the uh next motion to, or discuss it more to approve the insurance from
I'll make a motion to accept it unless someone has more discussion.
Second.
I have a question still that, you know, uh we haven't had a chance to get to, and just, it's a quick one, on the comparison for the two different insurance policies. Uh Kent, you talked about the difference in deductible on earthquakes, which you were saying on a low probability and I'd agree with you. But it also has a difference on flood deductible, and I would think flood is a higher probability.
So flood is not uh sewer backup or some pump backup, flood is water coming in from outside the building. Does that happen to us? I, are we close enough to a creek or something that would be flood prone? Are we in a flood plain? I don't think we are.
Yeah, but with the climate change and tornadoes that haven't happened in two hundred years and seven inches of rain in four hours, it might be something to consider.
So the other thing to think about is currently we have a twenty-five thousand flood deductible, yeah, that would be going up to fifty. Um, what are the odds of having a flood even as high as twenty-five thousand, causing twenty-five thousand of damage?
Well, and you're saving how much on the policy? So after one year, it doesn't matter anymore, right, we we saved the deductible.
Right.
I'm just asking, because
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that it does, but it just seemed like a slightly different conversation. Um, okay.
Okay, so um Kent, you moved it and who seconded it?
I did.
Um Bobby seconded it, so uh roll call please.
Uh trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
And trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Uh, so now we're going to move to the tax levies, right, so uh the first one is for the Long Grove Commons SSA number two. Um, I probably caused the confusion because I asked about the uh increase. Um, we didn't do one last year, but we are able to do a three percent increase. Uh so, we need to uh uh basically levy the uh the tax, uh but um do we, do we either keep it flat or do we do the three percent that we're allowed to by um the ordinance?
And actually, we can go up six percent because the, the way the ordinance is structured, we had the twenty-seven, twenty thousand max at the start with three percent each year, how much we levy of that is always up to the village board, so the amount that is currently uh available, I had that in front of me, give me just a moment, please.
I, I think
It's in
It was in Greg's manager uh report, right, but I'm trying to pull that back up.
Twenty-six, nine, fifty-nine.
Right, that that's, we we can go up to that, but we can also go anywhere uh less than that.
Oh, I see, you got them both there, okay, got it, in the new report.
And whatever number you pick will then be automatically uh divvied up by percentages under the ordinance.
And the reason for the increase is the cost for sheriff, police and things like that go up.
Right, again, when we set, when we set this up some years ago, it was at a time when the village was was recognizing that, you know, we don't have a need for that kind of patrol service in that location and we probably have to supplement and and the village did up its in uh its participation of the of the sheriff back then, and this was uh to help defray some of those additional costs.
I I don't know what the board feels, I mean, given that we're still in the pandemic, I don't think, I I mean, I think we should increase it, but I don't know that we should go do the shocker and do six, but I would look for the board to provide feedback.
Okay, if 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 you could explain again, Vic, this is money that we control, we spend and it's dedicated as a
For police services, basically.
Pardon me?
For police services.
Okay, that's all it can be used for?
Yes.
So they they pay this in addition to property taxes and every, every comparable to everyone else?
Right, again, they don't pay any property taxes to the village, this was seen as, yeah, this was, this was seen as a, as a development that given its location and its character uh would likely put additional strains on our police services without any offsetting uh benefits, so they agreed at the time of development approval to this special service area and that's what these monies are for.
Thank.
What percent of our police service has gone up since last year?
Yeah, what was it, was it Chris?
I thought it was a three percent escalator.
Yeah.
Well, we should do at least that much then.
And and we have, the village has historically done the three percent last year. The board i- in consideration of the pandemic and the impacts that that was having, kept it flat, so whether we repeat that, go up this three percent or or take it back to the maximum that we're allowed is all within the discretion of the board.
I I I, in light of all of that and the fact that there's still, it's still a fairly quiet area that we still have to kind of always remember is part of Long Grove, or not everybody does, I would personally not favor six percent.
Would everybody be agreeable to the three percent?
I'm fine with three.
We're not talking big money here.
No.
No, a few hundred either way.
Right, yeah.
No.
Bobby, are you good with that?
Three is fine.
Three.
You say Bobby, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yes, three is fine.
And Chris?
Yeah, it's reasonable.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
So moved, three percent.
Moved by trustee Tanucci. Uh, moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by trustee Michelle, this is to um for the tax levy uh for the special service area number two, uh which will be in increased three percent um year over year. That's a roll call.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
And trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. This is, so this, this is the next one, uh then now this is the question is, when do we have the discussion? This is the consideration ordinance adopting the tax levy for the Village of Long Grove Special Service Area number three, Downtown Historic Business District for the Promotion of Tourism and Economic Development. Do we need to have a discussion here? First.
The
I, go ahead Greg.
I'm sorry trustee, the um as as the board knows, there was, there were concerns uh expressed in the past meeting and and not only the past meeting but other meetings um about the tax, the annual tax levy for um the HD LGBA and how that money was being used and the reporting of those funds. And uh trustee Kritzmeyer and other trustees uh expressed that concern, there's been conversations had with leadership at the HD LGBA, including conversations I've had with president and the secretary, I'm sorry, the treasurer as well um about uh the sales tax collection, about uh program reporting, uh about the submittal of a budget and uh I guess I'll defer to trustee Kritzmeyer uh on that, I I I think to the point and the trustee and I talked about this. This, tonight's uh discussion, the SSA is uh the discussion point tonight for for action by the board. Uh and and uh not, not anything uh beyond that, but these are discussion points related to that SSA tax levy. And I'll defer to uh, or I'll yield to uh trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yeah, so I, because I know at least one board member called me on this also, there, there's two different things going on here, the SSA is something that was established in two thousand and five and so we need to just go ahead and I think move, you know, take action on uh adopting the levy that goes with that SSA, we have two responsibilities with that, make sure we levy the taxes correctly and then make sure that the taxes get used for the things the SSA asked it to be used for. So this action is about the SSA. The other conversations we've had are then about, well then, using the money for those purposes, um which has always gone to the HD LGBA. We have an uh put together an agreement in early twenty twenty that automatically renews, um unless we say otherwise, uh and that has a number of reporting items and we really have not ever gotten And that has a number of reporting items, and we really have not ever gotten all of those reporting items. Those are the items that, because the money comes through us as a board, we have responsibility to oversee that the money gets used for the ways that it's supposed to, or at least that a reasonable person would say, okay, yeah, this money is for economic development and tourism. Do we see a plan and a budget that reasonably looks like that's what it's supposed to do? Not meant to be, we're not making the plan, we're just making sure that we oversee that one exists. So there's a lot of number of reporting items, what's planned, what does it cost a budget and what results are expected? And then looking backwards, how did it go? How was the money spent? What results were obtained? We have now received information for the past year, including the audit. So how was the money spent? How did it go? A broad discussion of what happened. We're still in need of the future items, looking forward to plan, a budget and expected results that would reasonably be expected to look like they're going to promote economic development and tourism. So I would basically be advocating, we go forward with the SSA. I do think that we need those items of information that are due from that agreement. And I've talked to Ryan a couple of times, village manager. Jackson just indicated he has and a couple of others. I, I would not be in favor of turning that money over until we get all of the items that that agreement has indicated. But that's not something we have to act on right now. What we need to act on is the SSA. It's the tax levy part, I guess.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Ryan.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, and I don't mean to be rude, but I really, I've asked for the board to make some conversations and I'm, I'm, I'm really not trying to be rude, Brian, but I really do want to hear from the rest of the board.
And you, you brought my name up, so you, you said you talked to Ryan, so Ryan should have the ability to comment, being that you brought my name up. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, so Ryan, just if you could make it short, that would be great, so.
So our organization is audited by a third party, of which that's certified and sent to the, to the village for the 165 on an annual basis every year.
Yep.
So last year, you guys, as a, as a, as a board, made some new ramifications that, to our knowledge, was never brought to us to say, yes, can we agree to this, do this from a reporting standpoint? Our goal is always to make sure we provided you guys our audited, our audited documents, of which every receipts, every T's crossed, every I's dotted, to have our visitor center, to promote the town, to market the town, to have conversations to say to withhold our money that we created the SSA for this downtown, to make sure that we can manage this, this, this organization. When this organization was put together, a trustee, non-voting trustee member sat on our board from the village. The village decided to pull themselves off of that. Again, total transparency, it was always there, that, that, that board member sat, listened, participated in all of our meetings. We also have a village trustee and village manager that do attend our meetings, of which we are open and discuss all budgeting items, successive items and planning of items for our downtown. To say that we are not transparent on here, I think is highly false. And I think if that's the point, then there's a miscommunication on your board and in the direction of what's happening and what's being presented.
So I see where this is going right now. I think, so the, the ask, Ryan, is there, there is some, you know, additional information, right? So we, we got the audit, there's a few other items. And so I think the ask is, let's, let's just get the information. I think there was good discussions had. And if, if all the, if we get all that, there's no issue, right? And it sounds like, it sounds like we're moving in that direction, Ryan, right?
Correct, but we, we don't work on our budget till, till January. If that's just our timeframe with everything going on, so our budgets don't start till January.
And I think that'll be fine. I think that'll be fine. It's something that we need to have done, I want to say by like March, right? So beginning of March. So we're asking, can you, you know, all the information, we, there's an agreement that was signed. I'm sure that you'll, this sounds like all the right discussions are happening. If you get that to us, I don't think we're going to have any issues.
Okay.
And I would agree. I, I would agree, that, that's, that it's really just trying to say what's, we're not trying to tell you what the plan should be, just we want to be able to say, look, our job is to make sure there is one.
If I could ask, there was a document that, that I got, I'm not sure where it came from, and it's, it's implementation agreement items, and it, it doesn't line up with, with the agreement specifically. And it has things like keeping a headcount of who walks in the, the information center and number of visitors to the website and, and things like that. Is that what you're looking for, Ann?
That, that's, I'm looking for at this point. So what we've, what we've been provided has been not very quantitative, but a page and a half overview of what happened in 2020. And so those sorts of things are the kinds of things that are kind of like backwards looking, like how did it go? So, yeah.
Back to my question, though, do you want to know who walks in that building? Do you want to know the metrics of their social media, the number of posts, visitors, new followers, public relations earned and placed media content? Do you want that kind of depth in, in their reporting to you?
Here's the thing, Bobby, and I, it's, I think we as a board, it's, it's not that we're going to look and say 42 is better than 39, but the opportunity of, it's easy to get website metrics. It's easy to say, you know what, have a tally and hash marks and, and things in there. So it's not so much the, what do the numbers matter? But having those kinds of results are really good evidence that, you know what, yeah, it's working.
So, so is that a yes to my question?
It's sort of, okay, those are examples. And by the way, the items that, I'm not done.
Did you write this?
I wrote this, yes, I wrote this, and that was, in fact, I sent that over in September because there was a question of like exactly what is looking for. And so it was an attempt to try and say, all right, here's what that kinds of things would mean. Let me be clear, though, what's missing right now on the reporting is not really the backward looking. It's the forward, what's the, what's the plan, what's the budget?
But, but I think that the, that my question is very important to them because they need to know, and, and I don't know that they've seen this, this list, but.
Yes, they have.
Okay, so, so how many more people should they hire in order to provide this information to you?
I, I'm not sure why you're making it personal to me, Bobby. I'm saying as a board.
Because you're the one asking for it.
I am suggesting that we as a board ought to be talking about this and asking for reasonable results. Website visits, you can pull that up in a couple of clicks. These are.
So.
I, let me be, let me try to clarify this, and if anybody else wants to jump in, please do. It's not that the numbers itself are so important. It's the idea that for us to say, hey, this taxing money that came through got used for economic development and tourism, having some level of like actual concrete results says, you know what, okay, that's a reasonable thing to say, yep, they had results that made sense that were promoting tourism and economic development.
What, what I, what I take from this, from the questions that are being asked and from what you're responding and is that those numbers and that, that information is, is, is interesting and it helps prove the point. The issue here is that we have, as a village, we have a liability, if I understand this correctly. We're liable if these, the monies for which we are basically a conduit, or in a sense, a conduit, that they are being spent as, as, as the grant was written. So there are certain business documents that, that people routinely present. I'm sure the auditors must have looked at things like budgets, you know, balance sheets and revenues and expenses. And, and I don't think anybody cares about the individual merchants. We're, we're talking about where these monies are going. Probably, I'm guessing primarily to, to finance the festivals. Is that, is that, is that a correct assumption on my part? And anything that, anything that brings in tourism?
No.
I think we're getting way off track here, I think.
So 165 goes to the operation of the, the visitor center, the marketing of the, of the downtown and to the staff of the downtown. The events and everything else that we do as an organization comes from the profits of what we put on from the events.
I see, okay.
So that's when we provide the full financial audit, because we not only do the full financial audit of the 165, we have to do it for the whole organization because of our, our status.
So, so let's, but I mean, what we're trying to do, I, I think is, I, I think we're getting, we're getting way too technical here, but so we have a contract, right? We have an agreement, and all, all we're looking for is can we cover those items in the agreement? You know, get the information that's requested in, in the agreement. I think that's what we're asking. I think we're getting, we're getting way too far in the weeds on this one, in my opinion.
So, so they won't get their money until they do this?
Well, we don't have a budget yet.
What's been done?
Well, we're saying we, right now, we have to levy the tax, so it's there. And we're expecting that they'll get the information to us that's missing, right? The budget and what else are we missing, Ann?
Budget and the plan that goes with the budget, so here's what we plan, you know, here's what we plan to use it for.
The 165 is the visitor center, it's, that's what, you have that as an audit, that, that is the, that is the budget. The, the events, a budget, that's, that's irrelevant to, to the overall SSA. It's the operation visitor center.
The question I have, and it's just a quick one, and if it's with a soft track, then ignore me. But does a, having a visitor center induce tourism?
It helps market and brand the town for when people come to town to know what's happening, to what's going on. It's part of what was established, and that's why this was established as the downtown when the SSA, SSA was created, to have the visitor center and operate, market the town.
I see.
So, so tonight, tonight, we are not making any decision on deferring payment or anything like that. All we're doing tonight is levying the tax. But it was the discussion that, that, that we wanted to have, just to make sure we have all the information for our fiduciary obligations as, as a village. That's what this was.
I, I do, Bill, but one conversation that did arise out of this is that I was told by, by Ann that the village, if they, with their discretion, if they wanted to use it with the Economic Development Committee, they could do that with our money that we set aside and put together as an organization. I had a big problem with that comment, being that this is our tax body, it's downtown, that created the SSA to use it to market our town. We said, okay, we can take a portion of this and put towards a different organization within the village. It's a problem for me, it's a problem for the rest of our board.
We'd have to rewrite the document because it's only with the downtown area. You couldn't use it to, you know, for things outside of our downtown district.
So, so I mean.
No, the, the, that's correct. The SSA money could only be used to promote the downtown. I mean, that, because the, the organization of the SSA is very clear on that.
I'm, I'm going to tell you, I don't think anyone wants to seriously do that. I think we want to just make sure we have everything documented properly.
Let me just say, this, today, I, I had a great events meeting at our new, our new visitor center. And the girls ran out to get some coffee, and I was left to watch this, mind the store. And five ladies from Wisconsin came in. And Tuesday is a very challenging day to find a, a sandwich in town. And it was so fun talking to them, and I asked them if they, if they liked beer. And said, yes. And so I texted Mike Marr and I said, you know, Mike, and I sent a picture, I took a picture of these gals in the visitor center and I, I sent it to Mike and I said, are, are you looking for some company, Mike? Anyways, and I told them all the stores that were open and where they could get a cup of coffee and all that. And it was so funny, when I was talking to him previous to this conversation, they would say, well, we have just enough gas to get home, they said. And because when I told them, you know, that the restaurants weren't open and this and that, and, but they said that they, and, and they were pretty excited about being there. And I told them about, we were doing some free carriage rides on the 20th, and we got some of the restaurants to open on the 20th. And so that's, that's the kind of thing that happens at the visitor's center. I mean, it's an, it's a nexus for communication and understanding and handholding. And just to let you know, it's, it works. And that's all I have to say, go ahead, guys.
Well, I think what we, you know, unless there's any objections to the board, I think we need to levy the, the tax tonight, right? So, and do that, and then there still is that follow-up conversation. We're not going to settle that tonight at the meeting, but I'm sure that we're going to get to the bottom of it. It sounds like all the right conversations are happening now.
I would, I would hope so. Adopt the ordinance for the tax levy for the downtown special service, service area number three.
Okay, moved by trustee Riley, seconded by, I'm sorry.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. That's a roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
All right, motion carried. The next item is the.
I don't think I said aye yet, I was muted, but aye.
I'm sorry about that.
I heard aye.
That's okay, did you?
I did.
I thought I heard an aye too, but.
Sorry.
But anyways, consideration of ordinance, adopting the tax levy for the Village of Long Grove Special Service Area number four. This is the Deepwell Water System. Any discussion, we're looking for motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, roll call, please.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
A motion carried. The next one is consideration of ordinance, adopting the tax levy for the Village of Long Grove Special Service Area number six, the downtown Long Grove, Old McHenry Road Public Water System.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Micho, seconded by trustee O'Reilly, roll call.
May, may I ask a somewhat related question? And, and that is that, that I've been on this board for over five years, and we have never had a healthy bid on our water system. And are we going to have that this year?
On operating it, you mean?
Yeah. We were going to do it last year in January, and we didn't. We were going to do it the year before, and we forgot, and we were going to do it the year before that, and we got backed up against a wall. And so I'm, I'm wondering, I've, I've written the suggestion that we need to discuss this water system and, and, and the costs involved and the bids that we need to do. And I never hear anything more about it.
So I'm going to, so both trustee Tanucci and village manager Jackson, this is something you guys are working on, right?
Right.
We were taking, we, we know that when we started making the assessment about different water distribution and service, that the one thing we walked away from without a doubt is that the loss we suffer on an annual basis because of our lack of users and our costs, our overhead costs to, to do that distribution of water, so we are.
Are we going to have a healthy bid process this year?
Can I tell you that? I, if you want me to put together a bid package, I can absolutely put together a bid package.
Well, we were, we were promised it years ago, and we still don't have it. And if we put 10% of the effort that we put into the downtown requirements and into the, the well, I think we'd see a bit more profit.
Understood. So, so trustee, to your point, I'm putting together an RFP NIT services right now. I will also work on putting together the, for the board, an RFP for water services to the water plant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Phil's quick, Vicky, you want to continue?
Okay, trustee Michelle.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
And trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Now we have, it brings us up to the discussion of the berm um, at the Long Grove uh, Country Club there, right? At the Grove Country Club, not the Long Grove Country Club, Grove Country Club. So who wants to, Greg, do you want to lead that discussion?
Yes. During our last village board meeting, I had mentioned that uh, the Trumble Company had indicated Trumble excavating and indicated they were done with their work in that area. Myself and uh, Jeff Perry went out to the site. Uh, I think it was almost the last day that uh, Mr. Trumble was out there working. And just strictly on the visual that was made by uh, by Jeff, he could tell that not only were the plantings not adequately complete, but the berm um, did not uh, fulfill the entire of of the corrective action or corrective work plan that had been submitted to the board some time ago. Uh, when I asked him, what would it take for us to remedy what was still outstanding? And it it depends what the village board feels is appropriate that needs to be taken care of. He said about fifty thousand dollars as it related to the berm and about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars as it relates to landscaping um, in the spring, going back and relocating trees and making sure what uh, uh, was committed as far as type of plantings, uh, uh, you know, we're we're taking care of. Uh, the question that goes before the board is what approach do you want us to take at this point? Uh, do you want staff to work with the Grove Country Club uh, to continue to work on that berm? Do we want to uh, keep eighty thousand dollars? Um, to go ahead and take the corrective action that's required? Do we just want to worry about the twenty-five to thirty thousand on the plantings? Uh, do we want to hold on to the entire bond and staff is looking for direction on our next step to proceed? I think and Jeff can jump in, but I think we are both under the impression that Trumble will not be coming back.
All right. So so what's what's the recommendation, Greg? Um, you know, what do we do here? What are you recommending to the board?
Um, I I guess I I guess I would leave it to the board, but you know, I I don't know how much further we're going to get with the berm and I can't speak to how this all evolved because it happened way before I I arrived. Um, I think certainly one of the things that need to be taken care of are landscaping and the swale. Um, so I, you know, I I I think for us to withhold money in order to make sure that's completed in the spring, uh, I I think that's important. I don't think it's the most attractive plantings that I've seen uh, as as we look at those. I don't know how much more movement we're going to get on the berm unless we turn around and do it ourselves. And and this may be a case where the elevation of that berm is is so minor, the variation from uh, from what was expected that we move forward, take care of the plantings and uh, go forward with the village's business in other areas.
I think it's time for us to nip defeat, declare a victory and move on.
That's a and I think I'm I'm along with you on that one. I think there's um, there is one corrective action and we probably need Jeff to talk about it, but that's the drainage swale. Right? So there might be a couple of things that really have to be done um, that 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 if they don't get done, it's going to cause problems downstream, so to speak.
Correct, correct. Yeah, the uh, as-built plan that they submitted was devoid of the required swales. Um, that was a an integral part of approving the corrective grading plan. There's a lot of natural resources around that area uh, protecting the wetland to the east, the mature houses or the mature trees to the east. And then there's also the uh, uh, residents to the southeast that um, you don't water draining toward. And then also um, to meet state requirements and other county watershed development ordinance requirements, swales were around the north side of the berm too. So um, those uh, were uh, somewhat there visually, but uh, they're 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 nowhere near um, based on my observa- visual observations, nowhere near uh, what they were approved to be. And uh, you're correct, President Bill, that getting those in is uh, you know, a a must, in my opinion.
Yeah, so the so the um, here here's this is one when I read the, you know, I know I asked a bunch of questions, you know, to Greg, but I'm on this one. I so the thing is, is right now there is some corrective action needs to be done. We don't want to spend any more legal fees. We don't want to spend any more engineering fees. But there is a bond that we have right now and my recommendation is is that we hold on to that bond and we request that they those things that have to be critically fixed, we make sure they get them fixed, like the drainage. I don't know how the board feels about that, but that's my recommendation.
What um, Vic, could you tell me one more time? What's involved in in calling the bond?
Uh, there's a notification provision in the bond to the surety and uh, theoretically, uh, they are to recognize that the work isn't done right. We would have to demonstrate that as part of the notification. And they would make uh, sufficient funds available for either themselves, the 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 surety, to hire somebody to correct it to force the uh, the N and J to do it or to give money to the village to hire a third party to do it. Now, I think it's fair to say that bond companies are generally in business by uh, doing what they can to avoid paying uh, on those things. And and so that's always a risk that they're going to be troublesome about it. The bond does require them to pay any cost of uh, of enforcement of the bond uh, as part of that.
So that's the that that last part is a little nebulous still for me, like they're they're in that business. They 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 are the surety, they took the risk, their client has defaulted and we say, give us the money. Get it done. Why? What's the point of having people put up bonds if it's that difficult to get the money out of the bondholder?
Uh, you know, it's it's no different than insurance. You make a claim and and you believe your claim is worth X and they say, no, your claim is really only worth something less than X. Um, and and so, you know, you have a similar issue with bonds. And the the issue of surety law in Illinois, as well as in most other states, uh, they are uh, tilted toward the surety. Now, this particular bond has provisions that uh, are essentially overriding some of the case, you know, some of the common law insurty ship, but uh, that the issue is bond companies are uh, are tight with their money.
Okay, so all right. So let's say, for example, it's taken one step further. Um, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollar bond, right?
They're they're about, right.
Okay, so we call the bond and we get forty thousand. Can we put a lien on the property for anything over that that we have to put into this this parcel?
We we do have other uh, remedies than the bond. The bond is just one of, you know, a handful of remedies available to us. It's the one that gives us uh, you know, dollars in hand, which is why I think it's probably the the first place to start.
Right, right. But can we lean the property if if we reach a point where, let's say, for example, the engineering, we get forty grand and the engineering costs seventy-five thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand. I couldn't, I couldn't care less about the landscaping. It's their property and if they wanted to look, you know, if they wanted to look beautiful, mazel tov. They wanted, if they want to plant weeds, I don't care. It's not my property. I ca- I care about the the stormwater issues, the drainage issues and the fact that that dirt isn't compacted properly, so it's going to come tumbling down like a sandcastle. There, you know, we have residents who live around there. It's it's just not good. Furthermore, they're basically saying, okay, Long Grove, let's see what you're going to do now. And we've been over this and over it and over it and it's like we're, we've been reasonable, we've been more than fair. It's cost us probably more than it's cost them, given the stake we have in the property and the stake they have in their property. Where I am right now is call the bond. And we do, we do the stormwater management, the stuff that'll protect our other residents and maybe rough fifty-three and people on the other side of it are old fifty-three. And then and then then, you know, we don't get our money back. We put a lien on their property or whatever else you recommend, but I'm 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 I've had it. It's enough talk, enough nice guy. Done.
So so just let me offer just an alternative and I don't, you know, so if if we start going down that path, we're going to have a bunch of legal fees, right? And Vic, I don't, you tell me what it's going to cost. And we don't need any more legal fees. I I don't know if they'll work with us, but we should not release the bond until they fix that the stuff that is really, you know, going to be a concern, the drainage. And we should, you know, have Greg that if Greg feels we can get that, that, you know, we push hard on that, you got to do that. It's a problem. You know, but I don't think we should go down the path of, this is my recommendation, you may all agree with me, starting to call the bond and hit all those legal fees that we're already I don't know, we're already underwater in legal fees, right? So but we want, we need to get it fixed.
But who's who's responsible for those legal fees by contract, by agreement? If we if we call the bond, do we have anything to that effect in in anything we've done with them?
Well, uh, there are two things to remember. One, uh, they, if you remember, there were fees that had been incurred by the village, uh, both legal and engineering
Yes.
at the outset.
Yes.
We had agreed to reduce those amounts to ten thousand dollars, but they had to have completed all of the work last by last June. That didn't happen. So they are on the hook right now, at least theoretically, for forty thousand dollars to reimburse the village for those uh, pre-November twenty, what was it, twenty twenty uh, expenses.
Yes, correct.
To the extent that the and and they have been uh, providing money in in escrow for engineering and forestry services since November of twenty twenty. So I think that uh, we still have monies in escrow uh, to cover those. They have paid those currently. If we have to go through any kind of enforcement, the agreement further provides that uh, all costs relating to enforcement, whether it's engineering, attorneys or other litigation out-of-pocket costs uh, are costs that we have the right to recover from uh, the Grove and and the J.
Okay. And and is putting a lien on the property for that amount if they don't pay it? Can we put a lien on the property for that amount?
Uh, we we don't have the express right to get a lien, but if we get a judgment, then we put a judgment lien on. Judgment liens, uh, you know, actually are are uh, solid liens to have in those situations.
Okay, so we we have a legal remedy that really shouldn't, we're not talking are are we talking ten, fifteen, twenty thousand in legal fees for that to happen?
Uh, you know, it always depends on how hard somebody fights.
Okay. So 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 a minimum of X and 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 let's say it goes on for six months. Just for example, can can you give me a ballpark?
Um, I I I could easily see it going thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. If they get ridiculous about it, then it can be get more.
Oh, oh, I think thirty-five is ridiculous. So so.
Well, I I mean, again, if if they simply say, yeah, we're wrong and we get in the court and in the court, uh, you know, we don't get any opposition, either they default or they admit they're uh, they're wrong, then it's, you know, it's a relatively short and inexpensive process. If they say, well, we want to conduct discovery, you know, that's a black hole. And you don't have the obligation to say, we don't want to do discovery if the other side does.
I understand. I I tha- that part I fully, fully understand. Um, Rita, could I remind you the definition of insanity? What is doing the same thing over and over and getting the same results? And expecting to get a different result. Well, but I think the difference. Every time we go up against them, we lose. That's only because we. That's why I want to declare victory. We agree to.
Should we be having this, should we be having this conversation in public or should we be?
It depends on where we want to go with this tonight, right? So if we want to get really, really uh, some of the discussion we're having, we can bring it into executive session, but what what I was hoping was, I I hope everyone looked at it, the berm. Um, it looks a heck of a lot better from what it was. Uh, there may be some issues with some of the plants, but we do have a serious issue with the drainage. And I was just, you know, without going into um, you know, crazy legal enforcement, how do we sit back down with them and say, guys, you you know, there's a few things you got to absolutely have to do. And hopefully they'll listen, right? I I don't know. Greg, do you do you feel that you you can have another conversation with them? And if we need to go to executive session, we can.
I uh, if the board wants me to, I have no problem going ahead and and uh, having that conversation. The 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 question is now is that the Grove's got to recognize, again, I don't think Trumble's going to come back, so they're going to they're going to have to find resources in order to fulfill their commitment. Um, I have no problem doing the discussion. It's, there's nothing lost by having the discussion and then uh, proceeding from there.
We don't have to release the bond right now. We can, it's, the work's not done, so we're holding it. So I don't know. You you tell me if you want to go to executive session and discuss it in detail, we can, but I don't think we should give up.
I think that's a plan.
Thank you, Bobby.
Go and tell them.
Okay.
Go tell them what they need to do. Phil, what, can I ask what your thinking is on that? On that strategy?
I I just think that that, you know, I think that they they think they're done, but there's some serious stuff that I don't know if they fully realize the swale is a big issue, right? Stormwater management is a big issue and I don't know that they realize that. And that's what we got to point out to them. The the nitpicking on some of the where the where the trees are or the landscape quality, uh, you know, all right, so what? You know what I mean? It's the it's the drainage I'm worried about. And we just need to make sure that they know. And I'll stand behind it too. It's very important that they fix that so so it doesn't harm anyone else in the village. And that's something that, you know, if we have to, we'll we'll get on the path you're talking about, right? But I I don't think we should have to. I think they should understand that drainage is an issue.
So so you and I have the same concerns. It's just you're you're saying, give them one more chance, and I'm saying, pull the plug. Is that?
Yeah, that's what we're saying, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Just I'm just want to understand, that's all.
If we want to take it, Chris, into executive session and go in a lot of detail, we can. I don't know that.
No, no, Bill, I I just wanted to stop that conversation before it got out of control, frankly. Um, I I I mean, I think I think it's always good to have a conversation before we take dramatic action. So yeah, I I'm I'm fully supportive of going to have a conversation with them and saying, look, here's here's where the board is right now. We're thinking you guys have to fix what we need from that fixed punch list, otherwise forget it. I I mean, it's always good to have that dialogue before we do uh, before we invoke the power of Vic.
Do we put a time limit on this, given? I mean, this is winter, but we've got sixty degrees coming tomorrow. Obviously, they can't get a, you know, a bulldozer out here tomorrow, but is the time limit April first, is a time limit? What what's realistic weather-wise?
I thi- I think we defer to Jeff on that because of his uh, of his uh, background and skills to say, okay, what what is a reasonable time to get it done? But to your point, trustee O'Connor, I think we have no choice but to draw that line and say, this is it. This is absolutely, if you're not done by, just to use the date that you used of April first, all bets are off.
Okay.
And be very strong with them on it, but 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 there has to be a deadline. It's it's gone on too long.
Okay, all right. I can live with that.
Can the rest of the board live with that? There's no response, I'll assume yes, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
All right, then I'll take that as the, I'll take that as my direction. I'll talk to Jeff about uh, the window of time. And uh, between the end of this week, beginning of next week, I'll have the sit-down.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to keep us moving along then. The next item. All right, thank you. All right. I'm going to keep us moving along then. The next item. Uh, I'm going to look for you, probably again, Greg, to introduce, which is the, um, the meeting that happened on the, uh, South Fifteen, right? So that Helen was there, Bobby was there, you were there.
We, uh, we had a group of, uh, trust, trustee, trustee O'Reilly and chairperson Wilson were in attendance. Amanda from, uh, Mondalango was in attendance as our representative from a planning standpoint. The property owners and their development representatives were pr- present. And we had, quite honestly, it was a good discussion. I, I don't think there was any mistaking, um, the opinions or, or sentiments of the people that were sitting around that table. Um, but there were, there were some questions as to what does that property, what is that property going to look like in the future? And for a development standpoint, the property owners and their representatives were basically giving, uh, asking us three questions to bring back to the board, so they could turn around and formulate some kind of plan or concept to take to the next step. We had hoped to do something along these lines with our workshops, but because of a variety of logistic reasons and and timing for some, for some of the people in it, uh, to be in attendance, we couldn't do it. So I'm bringing back three questions to the board um, that I would like to, uh, pull together responses and, and, uh, have, have a second meeting, which is what trustee O'Reilly and, and chair Wilson, uh, said with myself, that we would come back and have a second meeting and give at least the sense of where the board, um, sees this property as it relates to our comprehensive plan, as it relates to bordering the Sunset Grove um, development over there. So the three questions that, uh, being presented to the board. First one is, uh, does the village board envision property ownership or rental for the individual residential units that may be developed on that parcel? How does the village board feel about multifamily and not full retail? And what building, what building height requirement would the village board find acceptable? Uh, keeping in mind that right now, as an H, uh, HR one, I think there's a thirty-five foot, uh, max on that uh, for that zoning. Uh, right now, the parcel is zoned R two. And, uh, the comp plan, uh, that was amended in twenty eighteen has that space designated as commercial. So, yeah, I would, i- if the board is so inclined to have that discussion, I'd like to be able to bring something back to, to this group, um, to give them a sense of how to proceed, if they choose to proceed based on whatever the board brings back. So whatever we bring back from the board, I'm sorry.
So are you expecting to go around and ask the trustees tonight how their, their position is on these three questions?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think to put it out there for, for, for some discussion would, would, uh, be a benefit.
So for the questions, question one.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, hold on a second, Bob.
If, if I could interject with, with what Greg has said, one of the reasons that we don't have a plan to work on is that these are very basic concepts before anyone goes forward with actual drawing of plans. And, and quite frankly, we, we saw a plan that was awful. Um, and, and, and that's why Helen and I felt strongly that, that we needed to answer these basic questions for the, the, the owners and the, the developers, so that they knew which way to to focus their, their planning.
All right, so do you, um, can we just start asking the questions and go around?
Absolutely.
Does, does the village board envision property ownership or rental for the individual residential units that may be developed at that parcel?
So we, are we asking for a hundred percent property ownership versus a hundred percent rental?
I, I, I think we're asking for whatever, uh, you, whatever each individual trustee sees it, whether they see this total ownership, total rental split, just to get that feel.
And we'll just go around. I mean, Chris, uh, question number one, thoughts?
Thoughts. Division United Church came to a village board meeting fifteen years ago and said, does anybody have any objection to putting a church on this property? And everybody said, yeah, looks good. We love a church, until they came in with their plans, which was mega church, parsonage, multiple families, community center, daycare center, and an eight-hundred-seat church. I think it's very dangerous for us to go around the room and just go, yeah, this is what we think it should be. Cause at the end of the day, we don't know what it should be because we're not the developer. We're not the stormwater management guy. We don't know how many units go into that space. Um, we don't really clearly have a vision that, that I'm aware of that, that we have any consensus on as to what we think should go there. Um, I think asking us to answer those questions is really dangerous thing for us to do because it could lead the developer astray. Um, having said that, I'll answer question one, and I'll answer question three, because I have no idea what the word multifamily means. There's no definition presented tonight. Is it two units? Is it two hundred units? So do I like multifamily there? No way I can answer that question, not knowing what's envisioned. Um, I do not think Long Grove should be a rental community. Um, I don't think we should position ourselves to be that. I think our schools are already overwhelmed. I don't think I want to set up a bunch of rental units for people to come and go as transients to take advantage of our good school systems that we're going to pay for, that we do pay for. So I fully support full ownership. And I would not prefer to see rentals outside of any kind of commercial rental. Um, I like thirty-five feet. There's a reason Long Grove's unique. It's because we don't have big, tall buildings. And I will not answer question two because I don't think it's, it's answerable.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I'm going to move, um, along here. Uh, let me go to, um, trustee Tanucci.
So I'm not really sure how to answer these questions. As Chris said, we're lacking in information. But generally speaking, uh, I, I actually agree with him on number one, to avoid rental. The only caveat would be is if some state or federal organization basically tells us we have to do it, and we have no choice, that could be a location that would be considered. I don't think we're in that situation right now. So as it stands, I would say no to rentals. Um, multifamily, not full retail. I don't know what to say about that either. And so I guess I would just, you know, I, I know this isn't very original, but I would go along with what Chris said. I think I, I agree with what he said. Everything he said makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Again, pending further information. I feel like I'm operating in a little bit of a vacuum here. I don't have the information I really need to make an informed decision, but what Chris said, I think is reasonable, and I agree with it.
I'm going to, um, trustee O- O'Connor.
Um, well, we have to give Chris a home run on this one. I, I, I agree with your, the sentiments that, um, Chris verbalized. R two is R two. I don't know what the developers don't understand. R two is commercial. We want commercial because we need sales tax revenue. The more electric cars that go on the road, the less motor fuel taxes we're going to get. I think we're selling our residents short if we don't look ahead and see that that's not that far down the road. So am I totally opposed to some kind of residential on that plot? No, I'm not. And, and I, I do believe that renters do pay taxes for the schools they use because it's, the taxes are built into the rent that they pay. So it's for the, the same reason, if they live here, they get to vote here. So that part I don't have a problem with, but for, I, I do absolutely agree that, that to make a statement in a public meeting with, you know, oh, I'll accept X, Y, Z, that's not how it works. Bring us, bring us a proposal that recognizes it's commercial. Stop asking us for amendments to the zoning so that you, they can, you can put a hundred and sixty-five multifamily units in here, because a hundred and sixty-five is the minimum amount a developer has to have to unload it to an investor. That's the magic number. So, um, enough said.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Uh, trustee O'Reilly.
Um, the rental versus per, uh, ownership. Um, I, I prefer the ownership, but I would not prevent, want to prevent anyone from renting. So if I own the unit as an, as an investment, I, I should be able to rent it out, kind of thing. Um, as far as, um, um, commercial versus residential, um, I, I, I think the, the, the ship has sailed as to commercial. Um, the, the world is different than it was five years ago. Um, um, and, and I don't think that there's a, a demand for commercial being there. Um, I, I could, I, I could see residential and commercial, although tax dollars, we'd be better off having water users than sales tax dollars. Um, so, so there's, that's a mixed bag and as to how the economics would work with that. Um, and then the height. Um, I don't know the difference between two stories and three stories footage-wise. Um, I, I think with an, with a good plan, three might work. I'm not sure.
All right. Thank you for that. I think, um, if I'm correct, and I don't know who's got, um, architectural skills here, but I think you can get three stories right in thirty-five feet. It just depends on.
I think so, but I'm not positive. Yeah.
Right. Okay.
It depends on where you put parking sometime.
Got it.
You know, if you have a garage on ground floor and blah, blah, blah.
Got it. All right, um, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Sure. Um, and just for the record, as everybody knows, I live behind there. Um, so that's a dip, but I'm, and I'm wearing my board hat. Uh, I actually agree quite a bit with what Bobby said. I think I don't have, I don't have a strong opinion about ownership versus rental. I have a strong opinion about helping, uh, to ensure that there's good quality and a good entrance because of the location there. Um, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't really have a strong opinion on that one, and it's more of like, we need to get this developed. Wearing my hat as running point on finance, Bobby's spot on. We could use water users. Uh, and that property is already set for water, and that would be a very good thing. So not trying to sell out here, but I don't think we're going to do very well if we sit there and wait for perfection here. I think we need to get going with something that's good, but not necessarily perfect. Terms of multifamily and not full retail, again, I, I agree with Bobby. I think that ship has sailed for that property there. Uh, that's sitting in the TIF. Um, we have a timeframe, you know, a clock ticking on that. Um, and it would be good to get it developed in a way, and it would be good for us, I think, to help guide some developers with broad things. I, I, we've been waiting for something to come in front of us, and we're getting direct. Um, and it, it's just, I just don't think it's helpful to ask them to read our minds. So I'm fine answering these questions. On a building height, yeah, I'd be, I, anything more than three stories would concern me. And again, there are two and five acre properties behind there still. Um, I'm one of them. So it's more about, okay, what's the actual design? Uh, what are they going to do with, you know, light and sound and things like that to make sure that the other folks around there are properly taken care of. But I would be fine with something that's got both mixed residential and some level of retail.
All right. Thanks, Anne. Uh, Jenny.
The joy of going last, everyone says it so well before me. Um, I, I align with what Bobby and Anne have said. I am open to rental. Um, I'm open to multifamily. I am against anything over three, um, three stories. And, um, mixed, getting some commercial in there would be, um, ideal. But I think at this point, getting something in there is, um, important.
I- if I could add one thing, the, the reason for the, the rental per ownership question was would we tolerate full rental?
Yeah, and I, I heard that loud and clear. You know, you made a distinction saying, if I bought the place and I wanted to rent it out, I should be able to do that. But to have like a whole.
But it's like you, as a one-unit owner.
As a one-unit owner versus having the whole building be a rental thing. And I tell you that, that having it be a whole rental thing would concern me greatly, but.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was the reason.
Why? I mean, I don't, I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's the, you know, Chris said it well too about the transientness of it and everything else like that. Um, I mean, we, we don't have that in our community, right? Except for, I guess, if it's a senior center, right? But, but I, I mean, you, you want people to, to, to be there to take pride in their facility and their, their building and everything else like that. And I think the ownership, individual ownership makes that happen, but that's just me, so.
I, I, I'm, I'm just going to play devil's advocate, though. We have an owner on Old Fifty-three. Not, and I don't think that's a rental that's got all sorts of trash around it. Um, I just, I'm just, I mean, devil's advocate. I think the assumption that rental means not responsible or means not caring is, um, a really broad brush, and I, I don't agree with it. I completely understand the con- I could, I understand the concern about people who don't, um, share our pride in the community. I, I'm absolutely on board with that.
Yep, that's fair. But, but, so where do we go from here?
Well, I, I think the, the, the owners are, are, um, uh, in the meeting. Um, and, and, but, but our intent was to, um, reconvene a, another meeting, see where, where, what more they needed in order to get them focused on, on bringing us a plan. Helen, if you have anything to add?
You're muted, by the way, Helen.
No, you and Greg have, have explained, I think, the positions well.
Thank you.
So I would just add, if we get to the point where we allow unit owners to rent out those units, I think we should look at setting a cap at what percentage of the units can be rented out. Because if we have reservations about having rental only, if we allow owners to rent out units, you could get to the point in theory where, you know, eighty or ninety percent are rented out, and in effect, you have a rental-only facility, sort of through the back door.
Just playing devil's advocate, everybody on my street could rent their house out.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, it's a little different scenario than a high-density building, though.
But I don't think we can dictate that if, if an owner is renting a unit, it's single-family townhome or condo. If it's a hi- a high-rise condo, and I own a condo there, the HOA will tell me right, if I can rent or if I can't, or if we have a cap of ten percent, blah, 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 blah. So.
Yeah, you're right. That's controlled by the HOA. But can, does the village have the authority to tell the HOA you can't rent more than X number of units? Or X percentage of units?
Under Illinois law, the distinction between ownership or rental is not something that we control through land use regulations. It's just not part of it. Um, certainly, the character of the development that we have can encourage or discourage rental usage. And depending on the nature of the approval, we could put conditions on that if accepted by the owner, uh, could include a covenant, uh, that would put caps on or even prohibit rentals. Um, but, but that's something that would have to be uh, a matter of negotiation and agreement between the village and the, the property owner, the developer.
Okay.
The fact, the fact remains, it's R two zoning. So, you know, I'll be quiet.
It's right now, it's, it's actually zoned agricultural, and I think slated for commercial or highway retail.
No, it's, it's.
That's more accurate, yes.
So are we at a conclusion point for tonight on this?
Yes, I, I'll get with, uh, I'll get with both trustee O'Reilly and chairperson, uh, Wilson, have conversations on how we're going to formalize our communication and next steps with the, uh, property owners and, uh, developers.
All right. Thank you, everyone, on that one. Um, I'm going to move us along then. There is an item on here, Greg, about use of the ARPA funds. use of the ARPA funds.
This isn't, yeah, yes, this is an FYI for the board as, as we're looking to move forward. I had a conference call with Treasury Department and Deco on uh, uh, over, over the last day uh, talking about uses and the funds and when we have to make a decision as a village. Our first report is due in April. Uh, since we've already received the half a million dollars in ARPA funds, our first report's due in April. Uh, one of the questions I asked was, do we have to declare in advance of April of our filing of our first report, what we're gonna use the money for? And they said no. Uh, if you don't spend any money, uh, and you're still trying to figure out where you guys are gonna go with the money, uh, then you're fine. Uh, so I provided the board with a list of the various funding opportunities for us uh, as a village based on uh, how we operate. One of the questions that was posed to me was the use of funds for um public safety personnel to recoup costs associated with uh payroll and COVID and first responder. I asked that question of, of Treasury and Deco, and the response I got was like the CARES money, which I had, I dealt with a grant in my previous employer. Uh, you can use it to um, offset funding for first responders that come in contact or potentially come in contact with COVID. Um, my next question was because of the method we use for our law enforcement through an intergovernmental agreement, would that still hold true? And I was told yes, with a caveat that we would have to make sure that the sheriff's department didn't already do that, that they already charged for their people uh, against the, against ARPA funds or CARES funds. Um, for, for their sheriff's deputies. And so, you know, I guess my question on that is if we were to proceed that way, there are people during the time they're under our contract, and I would, I would argue the point that we would be entitled to that funding. But we're not there yet. I just wanna make sure that information's available to the board uh, as we proceed and start looking at these options on how to spend the ARPA money, whether it's through previous discussions of water distribution or public sector, I'm, I'm sorry, public safety employee reimbursement. Uh, I looked at some options for construction, um, increasing the footprint of the water, uh, water plant. Uh, that, that's not, that does not come into play here, so. Um, so this is for informational purposes and not more than that. I'm not, I'm not asking for direction uh, from the board in regards to that at this time.
Any questions or? If not.
Just one question, and I can put this in an email also. Jeff, when we did the stuff under um, Old McHenry and under Robert Parker Coffin, there was a conversation about putting conduit for broadband, but we weren't able to actually fill it. And so maybe one of the things would be to say, the broadband i- items here are not highlighted, but is there anything, did we do that conduit and would that apply? So it doesn't need answering now, but.
With your question, Anne, I didn't hear the first part.
Sure. When we were repaving or working with the county to repave Old McHenry and put water in and everything else, I remember a conversation about putting conduit in for broadband underneath the roads. I don't know if that, I don't remember if that happened. And if it did, would any, either of these broadband categories then also be open to us for consideration? Doesn't need answering now, it won't get answered now, but I posing the question. Does that make sense?
Yep, I'll look at, I'll look into the broadband, the, the first.
But did we?
The first.
Did we put the conduit in?
I'm pretty sure we did. Cause we, we did.
Jeff is shaking. He said, no.
No.
We didn't.
We didn't. Really?
Okay, well done. That becomes more moot.
Just out of curiosity, why didn't we?
I don't know.
Wow, what a missed opportunity.
We'll have to go back.
Probably money.
Yeah. Yeah, what, that I don't remember.
Hey, Bill.
I don't remember, I don't.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris. Do you remember?
I'm, um, no, I don't remember. I was just going, I was, I was gonna go a different way, but, so let that conversation finish first.
Okay, got it. All right, well, so we should probably just figure out what happened there, cause I don't remember, so.
It's kind of like, why did we lower the height of the bridge?
All right, we're not going there.
Okay, so I'll think that conversation's finished. Bill, I just wanted to just reemphasize what manager Jackson, Jackson just said regarding the potential use for um, for the, for this funding for public safety. If that's possible, um, then in theory, we could offset the current sheriff contract with some of this funding, which would allow us to use that current funding for other purposes that would not be encumbered by the restrictions that are being placed on us by the ARP. ARPA, ARP, uh, ARPA.
Yeah, I got you. Yep.
Uh, it's really important. It's, it'll make sure trustees kind of get that nuance, cause it's an important nuance, I think.
Yeah, we spent it there, and then we'll have money to do other things. So it's a great point, so.
Right, right.
If we're, if we're able to, but that's the thing that we really need to make sure. You know, I think, sounds like Greg said we could, but we just, we need to double down on that one.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. I just wanted to reemphasize that. Thank you much.
Could open up some other things that we need to do, such as um, new village hall or whatever Bobby says, you know, asked for some money to research what we could do with our, not maybe a new one, but renovate our village hall so we had more space, right? That kind of thing.
Exactly.
Put pathways along eighty-three.
There you go.
North, north of twenty-two.
What'd you say, Bobby?
Get a second bathroom.
And a second bathroom, there you go. Yep. All right, um, I'm gonna keep us moving then. Are we okay for that? Uh, so we're in the trustee and president reports. I did attend a, a meeting on Sunday night with Vernon Township. Um, it was John Altenberg, uh, in the Vernon Township that organized it. Uh, they asked me to attend to represent um, Long Grove. They're trying to form a commission um, that would, they, they would basically be a um, a conduit to try to um, a- attract or, or find funding that, you know, we have this federal um, infrastructure bill, and there's more money that's supposed to maybe be coming our way to support green initiatives such as solar um, and other types of uh, things, electric vehicles or whatever, whatever all the funding's coming from. Uh, it was, uh, a long meeting, it was an hour and a half. I think I was surprised that they have a consulting organization in mind to help with one of the elements, which is Veragey. Um, we're, we're different in that, um, we don't really have a lot of public buildings or a public fleet, fleet. We, I mean, we have a water plant and a village hall. Um, so they're, they're, they wanted, they, they wanna hire th- this consultant, which will do a, a free assessment of where somebody can um, save money or implement some green solution. Uh, and um, the, and, and so that's one element of it. The other element of it at some point later would be how do we help our residents implement um, green technologies such as solar panels on their roofs, et cetera, and uh, take advantage of potential funding for that. Um, my reason for bringing this to you right now is I said I would go forward to the next meeting. There's no commitment from the village. Uh, they may extend, you know, we understand that there's more than Vernon, you know, we're split between several townships, right? I live in Ela. Bobby lives in Ela. Chris, I think you're in Ela. Um, but they, it didn't sound like that was gonna limit it, and I'm not sure where they're headed. This was the, the first meeting that was there. They, they had um, uh, uh, state representative, uh, Dan Dietrich there, uh, state senator, Adrian Johnson. Um, there were other, you know, um, elected officials at this meeting. There were, there was Vernon, uh, Vernon Hills was there, Lincolnshire was there. Um, obviously, I see that the first phase of this, something more in it for them than us, but any objections if I proceed um, and continue on to see where this leads us. I'm not sure where it's going yet.
Sounds good to me.
Nope.
Yeah, see what it's all about.
I, 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 I would just suggest that in all seriousness, as we talk about money and the orgy of money that's going on in this country, look in the eyes of your children and your grandchildren because they will be, in fact, the ones who pay for this orgy that we're going through.
Yeah.
And, and, and when I look at my grandchildren and I talk with them about the state of affairs uh, financially, it is a very heavy burden that they will be carrying for us. So I just.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yep, no, I hear you. I hear you. And uh, that's, that's a worry too, so thank you for that. But I'll see where this leads us. Uh, there's no commitment. Um, financial commitment, I asked that question very bluntly. And um, I'll continue on and we'll see where it goes, right? All right, um, then let me uh, move to trustee Borowski.
Information's good, information's good, Bill. Go for it. I do fund my taxes with Vernon Township at Ela. No report.
Oh, sorry about that. I had that wrong. Um, all right, any, any, any reports for you, buddy chance?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, trustee Kritzmeyer?
None.
Uh, trustee Michio?
Uh, the only thing I would say is that Anne and I met with the two marketing teachers at Stevenson today and just kind of had a debriefing of the project um, with the collaboration with the businesses and um, I think it was an overwhelming success. Um, we are gonna take a break next semester. They're down a marketing teacher and they just, um, Jen thinks she has too much on her plate, but we're gonna ramp up again next fall, so. Um, and I did share um, the videos, the marketing videos um, with the EDC, and I, I was hoping that maybe Denise, you could post them up that everyone could um, on the board could see them as well. That would be great.
There's a bunch. They, yeah, we, we talked, and just to clarify also, if they were doing the same thing, she would be fine repeating it, but we talked about the businesses have been really wonderful, but it'd be nice to give them a little bit of a break, so to devise something new, we're gonna wait a year. The, by the way, the field trip was a giant hit. Thank you, John. He's off now, but um, in, in absentia, John Kapacki was a real hit.
He always is, he always is. Uh, Jenny, anything else?
Nope, end of report.
Okay, trustee O'Connor, you might have already had your report, but I don't know yet.
Yeah, no, finished, nothing. Thank you.
All right. Um, how about trustee O'Reilly?
No.
Trustee Tanucci?
The hour is late, I'll pass.
All right, thank you.
Hey, I, I'd like to thank Kent for all the work he's done, the insurance. That's a, a really good, good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
You're welcome. Thanks, thanks for the.
Kent.
You're welcome.
All right, um, we're gonna move along to the approving the pay warrant. Anyone have any questions or somebody wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Michio, seconded by.
Second.
I can second it.
Uh, I think you were. Seconded by trustee O'Connor.
I, I have um, two questions.
Yes, please.
Who, who is S C H U P B A C H? Who is that? It's under Vic.
Um, Sickich, you mean? No, no.
S C H U P B A C H.
Where is this?
Yeah.
Under Vic's bill.
Oh, we're doing the pay warrant, though.
Well, we pay him, don't we?
Oh, you mean in Vic's bill, hi- himself and his bill?
Yeah.
Which is a two documents, is it?
No, he's, he's, she's actually looking at the, um, and Vic, maybe you can help us. You sent us a detailed invoice, right?
Oh, yeah. But, but uh, I, I, what page?
Yeah, it's, it was, it was a FOIA. Yeah.
You can get back to me.
No, it, it, it was, it, it was a FOIA, trustee O'Reilly.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was the name of the requester.
Who is he?
They, they only have to disclose that. I don't know that we have that information.
I don't have, yeah.
Let me go on to, to uh, to Greg. What, what constitutes non-contract services?
In what area, trustee?
Uh, seven oh, let's see, five thousand seven oh two, I think. It's on the page, page one. These are my notes. I'm not looking at the actual document.
I got you.
And I'm just curious with fifty-seven fifty a month, what, what, what are non-contract services?
I have to go back and look at that, cause I'm trying to find it on mine. On, on the.
It's on page one of his, of his.
About, of Vic's again?
No, no, Jeff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at Vic's.
I'm sorry, I moved quickly.
Uh, Jeff, do you by any chance know what you billed us for? You're muted, by the way, so.
Sorry, I was busy trying to look it up. I know, uh, one of the things is, uh, is chemicals, but I'll, I'll, let me look up the, uh, the bill.
And, and who's the new administrator? Is it, is that Greg? Greg and Kent?
The administrative contact?
Yeah, no, meet, you, on page twelve, you meet new administrator and trustees. And, and, and I'm, I'm just curious, is that, it was that Greg and, and Kent?
That was probably the meeting where Greg and I went to the water plant, right?
Right.
You know what's really a shame? I've never been in the water plant, and I've been here for five years. Well, I've been here for thirty-five years, and I've never been there.
You should go. It's fascinating.
Yeah, I should be invited.
For me, it is. I'm an engineer, so it's fascinating to me.
Well, um, Kent has that as his oversight, so water.
Oh, so I, I'm not allowed.
No, Bobby.
Okay, forget my questions.
That's not what I said. But thank you. Uh, so we have.
Get back to me on, on, on those questions, please.
You got it.
All right, so Michelle, um, like, what was, what was the vote again? Who, who moved it?
Uh, trustee Michelle, trustee Michelle, trustee O'Connor.
Yep, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Okay, go ahead. Roll call, please.
Trustee Borowski.
Of course, aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Um, we now have the approval of the board meeting minutes from the November twenty-third meeting. Are there any revisions or somebody wanna make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee Borowski. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Michelle.
Abstain.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Um, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, move, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Michelle.
Aye.
And trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
See you next year.
See you next year.
Bye.